I just was like hitting me on my way here because I found it.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's now nine o'clock. We'll call this meeting to order. Start by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, everyone. I don't see anybody listed as an invocation today, so we're gonna go right to a roll call, please, Bonnie.
Morris, here. Andrews?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Henchel?
I'm here.
Spence?
Here.
Walter?
Here.
Lynn?
Here.
McAllister?
Here.
Seifert?
Here. Thank you, everyone. I don't see anybody listed as an invocation today, so we're gonna go right to a roll call, please, Bonnie.
Morris, here. Andrews?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Henchel?
I'm here.
Spence?
Here.
Walter?
Here.
Lynn?
Here.
McAllister?
Here.
Seifert?
Here. Fantastic. First public comment? Um, to be, well, Bonnie's gonna read the rules. She's gonna say you're gonna raise your hand. If you have first public comment, just please go ahead and line up here. Just for the sake of brevity, and thank you.
You probably should change that to...
We probably should. Someone brought it to my attention.
I know every time I read it, I think about it. Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners which is required to be open to the public under the provisions of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the board may state his or her name and township or district. Providing a specific address is not recommended. Persons may address the board on matters or issues which are relevant and germane to county government as determined by the chairperson. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions if any. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. The chairperson may, at his or her discretion, allow an additional opportunity or time to speak if determined germane and necessary to the discussion. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4 Order of Business. However, public comment may be received during the meeting when a specific specific agenda topic is scheduled for discussion by the board. Prior to the first public comment, the chairperson will indicate the topics on the agenda for which public comment will be accepted. Members of the public wishing to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the clerk in order to be recognized and shall not address the board until called upon by the chairperson. The board shall not comment or respond to a person who is addressing the board. Silence or non-response from the board should not be interpreted as disinterest or disagreement by the board. Please be respectful and refrain from personal or political attacks.
Good morning. Bruce Moore. I live in East Bay Township in Commissioner Henchel's district.
Time's up.
I gave you a couple of handouts this morning. I'd like to bring your attention to the first one. The Northwest Regional Airport Authority Personnel Committee Meeting Agenda from November 26th. If you turn to the third page, there is a the minutes of the July 11 Personnel Committee Meeting, where the airport CEO's compensation package is discussed. With an annual base salary of $310,000, cost of living, a longevity bonus of 8%, an on-call allowance which amounts to about $40,000 a year. There's no amount given there. A car allowance of $1,250 a month, works out to about $15,000. 457B plan, which, there are no dollar figures given, a retention bonus of $100,000. Then, retirement benefits to remain the same with the addition of coverage under the employee's medical dental until the CEO is eligible for Medicare. And a severance package that's updated to the continuation of the then-current base salary through the end of the contract, which is in 2028. This is a summary of the CEO's new compensation contract. I have concerns with board oversight because the final point, the severance package of going out to the end of the contract in 2028, is a poison pill. No board should sign up for a poison pill to fire its CEO. I'd like to now draw your attention to the second document that I handed out. The employment agreement. This is the actual employment agreement running from 2021 through 2020, excuse me. I copied the wrong one. Oh, no, this is the correct one. Item 2, term through 2028. I draw your attention to page 5. These are the termination criteria, or termination benefits. 7.2, let's see, 7.2, actually, let's go to the next page. Termination not for cause. 7.63, the severance due, that's basically, that's talked about in this summary. 7.64, benefits on termination. This is eligibility for, we're basically paying healthcare out through the CEO's future employment, or all the way out to eligibility for Medicare. This should have a dollar figure attached to it. It is not included in the summary that was presented to the board. 7.65, MERS Service Credit Purchase Payment.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, are you extending his time?
I'm gonna let him finish 20 seconds.
Is also not included. 7.66 is not included. These should have been included in the summary presented to the board, and they should have had dollar amounts attached to it. I have significant concerns about the oversight of the airport by the airport board, and have serious concerns about the bonding issue based upon that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Justin Lee, Traverse City, Michigan, President. So, I have the NARMRE minutes in front of me, and this is, I believe this is January. So, the Executive Committee Report. In our this report, it says that one thing that they're looking at is cosmic misallocation. Mr. Curse explained that the role of NARMRE is to ensure many components were used appropriately. Any personnel issues identified in the report should be taken up by the Northern Lakes Community Medical Health Board of Directors. The Executive Committee recommends that the Ryman Group, Ryman investigate review of Northern Lakes CMHA, be extended review cost allocation records for additional five to seven year fiscal years, financial year 18 to financial year 16. There's potential for Medicaid recruitment in our movement from Medicaid to a different funding source, local funds, at Northern Lakes Community Medical Health, depending on the results. And so, this is, this is, I, I'm just, I don't know if, if, you know, if there is any misallocations, so if there are, what would happen if there was? Would that mean that, that the counties would have to foot the bill? Because there's been a couple lawsuits with CMH, and those lawsuits are not free money. They actually have to come from somewhere. So, the lawsuit with joint blamer, that would be coming out of CMH's general fund, Northern Lakes General Fund. So, with these lawsuits that are happening, it begs the question, is there a backup plan for anything? Will that go ahead? It seems like all the good that has been done, all the two steps that you go forward, it seems like it kinda takes like five steps back. And that is a problem, that's issue, and that should be something that I think the counties discuss, and other counties need to discuss, is on what's gonna happen. Because we had the, we had the, we had the Henry Health Clinic wall. That kinda got shut down. That went away. So, if this report says, well, you know, there's some more money that, you know, might have been misallocated, so what happens with other programs with Northern Lakes Community Medical Health? Because, I mean, quite frankly, it's a nightmare for me to get primary care because of the whole entire thing with with Henry Health Clinic closing, and just everything else. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing as I'm guessing nobody else would like to speak, look for approval of the agenda, please.
Motion.
Support.
I missed the second, I'm sorry. Mr. Walter? All right, we have moved by motion by Andrews, second by Walter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carrie's. Discussion, 5A, Airport Bonding and the Traverse City Airport Presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Klein and staff. Board members are here. Also online are our counsel, Stephen Burke, who is a financial oh, sorry, thank you. Roger Swetz, our bond counsel, Patrick McGow from the airport, the airport authorities. And Kevin is gonna present to you and take questions that you may have. Morning, Kevin.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. I greatly appreciate being here. We're gonna take a team approach of presenting this morning, so let me introduce the team that's here with me. First of all, our Chair of the Airport Authority, Steve Plamondon is here with us. We have Bob Nelson, Airport Engineer, Mark Bishop, Airport CFO, Carrie Zeitz, Airport Attorney, Christina Woodward from Ricondo and Associates, Sean Wall from PFM, and then, of course, Patrick McGow with our, as bond counsel. You know, I wanna start today really and talk about partnerships with Grand Traverse County, Leland County, the city, and the history of the airport. When we look over, you know, we're 90 years old. The airport has been in its position since, for 90 years. And it takes, it takes partnerships, and more, I've heard more from our community in the last two years about their airport, our airport, and how it's grown, how it's impacted them, how it's provided the goods and services. So, this renovation is really about the strong growth of Grand Traverse County. It's about our region. It's about how, over the last two decades, our partnership has improved access, not only for our residents to the transportation system, but to the global economy. This project, this addition, you know, will meet the significant increase we've seen in demand at the airport. It will modernize and provide better customer experiences. This project is about meeting the current operations, the current demand for the airport, sustainability initiatives. Through this addition, it'll be a catalyst of what we continue to be our economic foundation of our region. So today, we're gonna talk about many different things. We're gonna talk about airport revenue in the background. We're gonna talk about our plan of finance for the project. We're gonna talk about mitigation of the county's risk for the full faith and credit, and our overall community impacts. Oh, it's not switching. So we'll be on slide three if you have that in front of you or in your presentation.
Thank you.
So, when we talk about the terminal addition, what is the terminal addition? What we're looking for in this particular project is we're expanding or adding an additional concourse, or four to five gates, that is just east of the terminal. When we look long-term in the picture there, long-term planning indicates and shows a third terminal that would be in 2035, 38, down the road. So we'll talk about this as being part of Phase 1 or Concourse B. Those are some of the terms you'll be hearing. At the time, we're gonna bring up Ricondo and Associates. Come on up, Christina. And she'll get into the funding plan, grant availability, passenger facility charge revenue. We'll talk about the Airport Authority unrestricted cash bond financing. The projections or the model that we used to have that reports that you have in front of you. Well, in that, we'll hear about how the airline activity and leased space impacts that. Our expenses and revenue, our debt service, and of course, overall financial feasibility, cash flow, and debt service coverage. So, to get into the details, the one who prepared the report and put it together, Christina.
Is there a way that we could pause this long enough to get the screens to match? I mean, we have it, but the members of the audience don't. I don't meter up, but.
We could sing Campfire Songs for five minutes.
Campfire Songs?
You know, start, Darrell.
John Jacob Jingleheimer Schmidt, his name is my name too.
Pretty bad that I was able to sing that right away. Singing that song, marking, marching down.
That's a camp song.
Yep.
Sorry to interrupt your flow.
That's all right. Yeah, it also affects our video feed that's being recorded, so the public can see all the slides, so.
Not that we don't wanna look at you, but.
Not a problem, not a problem. We'll get that information up, and I think it'll be beneficial to have it up.
Yeah. Even the picture of the terminal addition, which I think was helpful for people who haven't seen it.
I have that song in my head, though.
Or have.
Yeah, I do.
Get more coffee.
Password now.
Yeah, just a little.
Really high-tech stuff, this PowerPoint presentation. It's like, whoa.
So, DC, password for everything. Now we gotta change him.
Oh, maybe it worked.
Yeah.
Well, this button right here.
Whatever.
I was worth the wait.
Haven't been hacked in a week.
Thank you, Cliff.
All right, thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Nelson, for pointing that out. I was busy on my screen.
Is it all right to proceed?
Please do.
Okay, very good. Well, thanks for, for pulling that up. I think it would get very boring to listen to me drone on without at least a visual to accompany it for those that don't see it. So, thanks for the effort there. My name's Christina Woodward, as Kevin mentioned. I'm from a company called Ricondo and Associates. We are a firm that focuses solely on airport planning with a focus on both the physical planning, environmental, and then what's most relevant for this group, financial planning.
Christina, could you, your partner there didn't get introduced. Could you
Yes.
just give him a shout out because he didn't get his name mentioned yet.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. So, on the financial planning side, myself, I've worked on this project, among many others, and then Alex Dunaway, who's my colleague, that helped with the effort as well, largely focused on some of the detailed financial modeling, and both of us doing a cross-check of reasonableness. We've worked with the airport to assess the project itself, the financial feasibility, and then test things like the bond issuance and what that would look like. So, what I'm gonna do is walk through some basic airport finance. Some of you may be very familiar with this, and it's repeat, but some of it helps with background, just because airports are a bit of their own animal. So, on this slide here, you can see it talks about airline revenue and non-airline revenue. And that is the key aspect when considering whether or not bonds can be paid off, is what revenue is gonna be generated over a time period. And that revenue comes in two forms. It's airline revenue, which can be collected in various ways, and we'll get into that, and then it's non-airline revenue. And that's things that we, as passengers, are familiar with. It is concessions, it is parking, it is those revenues that the airport receives that are not being paid by an airline. So, we'll get into the details on the assumptions behind that. There's a lot of different ways airports can collect the airline revenue, and we'll touch on that, but this slide has some of those examples. There we go. So, just for perspective, this shows the airport's 2023 revenue. Some revenue is more significant than others, mainly, as you would expect, the airline revenue is a major part. You can see that the, the, the non-airline revenues also play a factor, including things like the parking revenue. On this slide, the dark blue is parking, and then the airline operations on the orange there, in addition to rental car concessions, and that means rental car they went to the airport, that makes up almost three-quarters of the total revenue of the airport. There's other things that are involved in there, but the most substantial are those areas. And that's what we look at as we're looking at projections moving forward. The other part, then, that, I talked about the revenue that's coming in, the other part is associated with the capital plan. So all these airports in the US operate in a way that is funding capital programs that accommodate the demand for the airports, and then also have the operation of the airport. And that's things like on the annual basis where there's a budget approved, and it is dealing with the support of the actual function of the airport. So the capital program can be funded in ways beyond those revenues that I was just mentioning. So they can be funded in, with grants from the FAA in Michigan. There's also grants from the state of Michigan. There's also fee-based charges. Next time you're flying and you look at your pass, your ticket, one of the things that's on there is called the Passenger Facility Charge, or the PFC. That is $4.50. There's a per-leg of your trip, and that is collected by the airlines and then remitted by the airlines to the airport for specific projects. That is managed by the FAA. They approve whether or not an airport can collect it, and if the projects are appropriate to be collected. That's one source of revenue. We'll talk about that a little bit. There's also some other financing approaches to be able to take advantage of the long-term revenue. As you might imagine, these projects at airports are large expenses. They can't be accommodated in a single year's collection of revenues. And so, financing is the approach that airports in the US take. So that includes mainly airport revenue bonds. You'll hear in the industry, it's called Garbs, or general airport revenue bonds. There's also some other financing approaches. Some folks will issue special facility debt, so that may be with a pledge of revenues, things like a rental car or a PFC revenue that's very specific. And then, there's also some federal loan programs that's listed up there. There's the those are not as common with airports, although are allowed. So, with this particular discussion, we'll dig into the funding sources in a bit more detail because the airport is using a combination of that airline and non-airline revenue, as well as these different funding sources that are specific to capital programs to pay for the overall five-year capital improvement program. So the first is AIP, or FAA's grant program. This is approved by Congress on an annual basis. Historically, it's been over $3 billion of approval. That gets disseminated to airports in two ways. One is an entitlement approach, and so this is based on the activity. Airports earn a certain amount of revenue based on that activity, and then there's also excuse me, there's also discretionary-based revenue. And so that is based on a particular project, and what type of benefit those projects provide, and whether or not they fit the criteria for those grants. The US airports function in a way that revenue that's generated at those airports must stay and use for airport purposes. So that prevents things like taking airport revenues and solving other, I don't know, school, school funding or city pension issues. It keeps the airport revenues intact at the airport, and that's in part because there's federal grants that are funding some of these projects, and it's an ecosystem of funding and financing that needs to stay contained. So that's one of the major systems. That's a long-term program that's been there for over a couple decades. One of the other major sources is that PFC that I mentioned. That's that $4.50. There's some nuances to that. We, the $4.50 has been in place since the 90s, and that is a set fee, 11 cents the airlines keep. The rest of it comes to the airport. There's in the, that application process that I mentioned. The distinction on how you can use these types of programs is driven by the projects themselves. The grants, the AIP grants tend to fund airfield-type projects. There's, there's a few others, but it does not typically go towards certain terminal projects, or there's a lifetime of the airport, a limit to what those can go towards. The Passenger Facility Charge is actually in place to promote things like safety, competition amongst the airlines, to be able to fund things that are going to allow for long-term air service to be at the airport and generate competition for the community to be able to manage airfares, so that you don't have a constrained airport which can create, from the, from the economic standpoint, can create an environment where airlines can start charging quite a bit more. So that's one of the mandates of the PFC, and there are PFC assumptions in here. So one of the more recent things is the bipartisan infrastructure law, or the bill. The, there's also referred to as the IIJA. That is the large funding program that, with COVID, the government established, and that has, similar to the AIP program, it has two types of funding. An entitlement-based or a metric-based funding that's earned based on activity, and then there's also the discretionary funding. Now, one of the differences with this program is that it can be used for things like terminal, where the, where the AIP program that the FAA manages, that's been there for quite a long time, does not focus on terminals. This is, this has an entire component to the bill that is specifically for terminal projects. The FAA has realized that a lot of the constraints at US airports are related to gates and terminals. Back in the early 2000s, the real constraint oftentimes was airfield issues, runway capacity. Now, the big demand is on terminals and gates. The airlines have grown quite a bit. They are healthy. They have figured out how to make money after the last several years, after many cycles of challenges in the 90s and 80s. So what has happened is they're able to grow, and they've been able to, the FAA is managing this program as well, and been able to fund some of these terminal projects. So, there's also, in the state of Michigan, airport grants.
Thank you, Bob Nelson, Airport Engineer. As Christina was mentioning, the state of Michigan also participates in our aviation development programs. They have made a commitment to match our federal grants at a 5% rate. So if you look at a 100% breakdown, federal grants typically come in at 90%, with 5% then being funded by the state of Michigan, and then 5% added in by the Airport Authority. and then 5% added in by the airport authority. That has been a standing commitment of the state of Michigan, and there has been continual funding and additional funding for airports to support not only the baseline EIP grants, but in addition, those discretionary grants. They're doing everything they can to match every federal dollar that's being supplied to our state airports. Another thing that I wanted to mention is our ability to petition the state government for additional funding. Other airports have done this, and that is something that we will be doing as we move into the future to seek additional grant sources from the state of Michigan. With respect to the model that has been presented in that financial analysis, costs were covered for the building, so that concourse addition, as well as the apron to support that. So essentially, the minimal amount of concrete needed for aircraft to traverse around that new concourse, and that, in the model, is totaled out at about $112.8 million. And then with some of the balance of the funds in our overall funding request scheme to be used as owner contingency. At the time of the bonds, we will use updated costs. We have a construction manager onboard now. We will work with that initial GMP, so to speak, for the building and bids and other things to create a final number in the future. Based on bids, we'll apply for these grants, and then use any other unrestricted cash or bonds to cover the balance. So we have a lot that we can do on the front end with grants, grant applications, that has yet to be determined, but will be finalized in that final analysis. And with that, I will pass it back over to Christina to speak to how the model incorporates some of these funding sources.
All right. So now we're going to get into what probably matters the most is the assumptions and information associated with the current projects that's at hand, and more specifically, what that looks like relative to bonds that could be issued. And so we've talked about some of the capital assumptions just now, and what's assumed for things like bill or the IIJA funding. This slide lists out what is there for airport improvement grants, as well as the details behind the bill funding that's there. So this is looking at what the airport will earn, what already has been earned, and then would be carried over. There is some allowance for being able to take advantage of funds that were not utilized, carry them over for up to three years. That way, airports are able to align the grants with the spend. That was taken into account. And then the bill funding also takes into account what is there already, as far as earned entitlement, and it has an assumption for discretionary grants as well. So all of this goes into a financial model, and that is a fancy word for saying Excel workbook with lots of tabs. And so what we do is establish what has been happening at the airport, and then we look at what would happen in the future, what would be associated with the project, and then what would happen with the revenues and the ability to do things like pay the project either from a cash basis or from the debt service, and that's the annual payments that the airport would make on the debt that's issued. And so there's inputs, projections, and then we'll cover the key metrics. So the inputs, as I mentioned, there's a lot of funding inputs. There's those airline and non-airline revenue. The passenger activity is key to some of those inputs, and we'll touch on that a little bit. And then there's also the revenue projections, how those fees would be established and collected by the airlines, and then what that looks like relative to that debt service that I mentioned, but also what does that do for the cash on hand for the airport? Because the cash on hand is important for when and if there are issues either with operating funding or with debt funding. And usually, what is pledged is the revenues net of operating costs, because the first priority is the airport is functioning, and then looking at debt service. If that is not covered, there's also cash on hand that can be used for situations in the future. Airports, over COVID, learned how important it was to have cash on hand. The rating agencies have focused on that more. We've been modeling it more closely, and then that is carried forward and looked as a key metric. So key expectations. On these, we're going to touch on them. Just for background, what Ricondo does oftentimes is when bonds are issued, airports or the issuer of the bonds has a requirement that an independent consultant looks at the debt and then assesses the financial feasibility. So we make these types of assumptions across airports, have familiarity what has been happening globally, and then a way to assess what's happening locally at the particular airport. One of the key things that we have is airline activity and understanding what's there. There's various sources for assessing the airline activity, obviously historical, what has happened, but there's also a lot of published data on what scheduled airline service is available and what's there. We have folks that understand the airlines' networks and what is likely. The FAA also issues independent forecasts. That's TAF, or the Terminal Area Forecast. They issue that for the nation, 3,000-plus airports, but then they also issue it for each individual airport, and they do that annually. And so that is another area where we can sentence check. Also, you have consultants or planners or engineers that will develop their own forecast to assess the need of the need of facilities and the ability to accommodate growth. So the other parts that we look at and closely figure out how that revenue stream may look in the future are things like how the rates are collected. And that can vary by airport, and the airport here has the longest established rate structure and how those fees and revenues have been collected from the airlines. That is projected going forward, and those revenues are collected. Many factors are around the combination or the CPI, the Consumer Price Index assumptions, or inflation growth, or it's linked to activity. As you can imagine, some factors are intrinsically linked to the passenger activity, things like car parking, while other things may be a growth of an expense that's fairly fixed, except for the fact that it gets more expensive each year, inflation, cost of goods, et cetera. So that is all collected in this multi-year model that projects out and calculates them. You've heard me talk quite a bit about the non-airline revenue, and you also saw that pie chart of what factors are really driving the revenue sources. And these are, there's various assumptions on each one of these metrics that are assessed and thought through. And so you can see, hopefully, on the slide, things like the rental income, the GA landing fees, tie-down fees. One of the largest is the auto parking. So you can, on this list, you've seen there's historical assumptions on inflation, and in some cases, we have increased by an additional 0.5%. And that's looking historically of what increases have happened in the area or nationally, and taking it into account and adding that on there. We tend to forecast non-airline revenues with a conservative lower growth rate, and we forecast operating revenues at a conservative higher growth rate. So over time, we have a higher growth in operating expenses, is what we're assuming, and relative to the non-airline revenues. The car parking is probably, the auto parking listed there, that's probably, that is a huge factor. But it is not, it was making up possibly about a third of some of those revenues. And what that is looking at is that link to passenger activity. We do not typically take the full passenger activity assumption and then adjust the parking revenues, because, just for purposes of being conservative. We stamp our names on these reports, so we want to make sure that we're taking some of those approaches. And then, right here, what we've done is take 75% of the growth, so that's a haircut on what's assumed there, and looked at growing that forward, and then taking an assumption around each year a 50 cent increase to that parking rate and what that looks like. So those are embedded. There's also rental car. That tends to be more on an inflationary basis, and adding that 0.5%, just what's happened historically in the area. The rental income concessions, the other miscellaneous items are also grown at their own individual rates, but they are not as influential in the total. So passenger facility charges. This is the long-term revenue stream. Now, as I mentioned, this can be used only for funding capital projects. This is controlled and approved by the FAA. Every airport, well, I shouldn't say every, nearly every airport in the U.S. collects a passenger facility charge to fund capital projects. Driver City is no exception. And so you can use it in two ways. One way is to use it what's called on a pay-go basis, collect it, expend it on a particular project. The other way is to use it to offset or pledge to debt service, meaning that that PFC revenue is used to pay the bonds that are funding the capital project. That's an established mechanism by the FAA, and many, actually most airports are using the PFC as a revenue stream offsetting debt. And why does that matter? Because there's also the factor of making sure that your airline charges don't escalate so much that there would be problem with service. That's measured on what's called a CPE basis, or cost per plane passenger, and so these PFC revenues help to offset that. So airline revenues. The end of the day, then you have also what's being collected by the airlines through various fees. And in this particular model, we've got the terminal rental rates, the sterile area fees. Terminal rental rates are on a square footage basis. The sterile area fees are on a per and plane passenger basis, and then along with landing fees and a small amount for system fees. The landing fee is based on the tonnage of landing weight that the airlines are bringing in. You can see here in 2024, relative to 2028, that there's a growth in both that terminal rental rate and the sterile fee, and that is associated with two things. One is the expansion, so there's more square footage to be leased, and then there's also a growth in passengers. And so those, relative to the landing fees, are growing at a higher rate, and so that's why you see that pie chart shift over time. There we go. So I'll take it from here.
Coming back to explain a little bit more about our process, again, thinking about this report and this whole program as a process. So where we're currently at in that process is we've just brought onboard a construction manager at risk. This firm, which is going to be the Crispin Company, is going to help us. As you can imagine, when you're adding on this type of addition to an operating airport environment, there's a lot of complexities, there's a lot of scheduling. And then in addition to that, and most important to this effort, is they will be able to help us understand when we construct something, what that will cost, so we can better define, as we move ahead, the timing of funds required and what we will need to do to offset those costs. What's in the model is a very conservative front-loading of all of those capital costs. So what we will do in the future is work with this construction manager to refine those costs and get a better understanding of how that will actually play out. But the current model is very conservative by front-loading all those capital costs. And again, to, as we do that, we've got our professional team onboard. So we have, of course, Ricondo doing our financial analysis, and then PFM helping us with our bonding scenarios and evaluating that, along with all the other things that we'll be looking at in modifying and tweaking to supply the revenues that we need to in terms of fees, rates, grants, and any other resources that we can gather. And of course, you've been hearing from Ricondo, and with that, I will pass it over to Sean, who's going to run you through the types of analysis in this process that we see for bonding.
Thank you, and good morning. So, you know, my job here is to talk more about the bond aspect of this and that kind of plan of finance as it relates to, you know, going to the market. So this right here is just kind of a breakdown of the capital stack and timing for the project, you know, in 2025, '26, the Phase 1, and 2027, Phase 2, and some rounding out construction in 2028. So we've got that on the left-hand side, and then moving left to right, you have the different breakdowns in terms of cost and where that money would come from, right? So you've got the total project cost of $112.84 million, roughly about $51.735 million of that would come from grant funding. Another $1.375 would come from matching or funds on hand. And then, you know, the amount anticipated to be bonded is that $59.729.823 amount. So that's really what we're talking about in terms of bonding and going out to the market to borrow. You know, a couple of key financing assumptions here is that we would, you know, go to the market in 2026, early 2026, have bond repayment terms of about 30 years, and then there would be a capitalized interest period during the construction of these improvements. So how do we get to the $59.729.823 number? So that is what we kind of work back from. So starting there, that plus issuance costs and capitalized interest, right, which is interest that covers bond interest payments during the construction period, gets us to just over 70 million, or just under $70,100 in terms of uses. How do we get there? You know, in the market right now, based on coupons and yields, there's a bond premium. So you have a par amount, which is your principal, plus an estimated bond premium, which gets you to that same dollar figure at just under $70,100. You know, this, again, is similar to what, or this is the scenario we've presented in the past. You know, we've got capitalized interest here, 30-year bond terms. And the way we're structuring this is based on the information provided in the Ricondo report, but we're not structuring a level debt service payment. We're structuring for a level debt service coverage ratio. So when we look at that on the next slide, we're going to talk about how we're structuring that debt service so that it provides annual coverage at a level or consistent amount. So again, that's what we're talking about here. Using, you know, determining net revenues from the Ricondo report in August, you know, we've determined those starting and coming online with debt service in 2029. So determining a debt service coverage ratio is simply taking those net revenues available for debt service over the available debt service to get that ratio. Based on the information that we've put together and the information in that report, we're targeting a coverage ratio here of about 2.14 times coverage, right? So there's 2.14 times as much revenue as debt service. That continues to change. As we go through this, that will change, you know, again, as we get closer to the market, and that'll change once these numbers are finalized in terms of the bond selling. And again, those are all projections going forward. So, but, you know, we're not necessarily, you know, modeling this out in terms of level debt, but we're trying to target a ratio, you know, of coverage in terms of revenue.
Good morning. I'm going to speak a little bit to some of the what-ifs. Obviously, everything we presented up to this point has kind of talked about the direction we're heading, but there's always going to be those scenarios of what if this happens, what if that happens? So we've tried to outline a few of these items.
Got to stop you. Can you reintroduce yourself, please?
Sure. Mark Bishop, Chief Financial Officer at the airport.
Thank you.
So the list here is not all-inclusive, but there's things that we've already considered as part of our modeling process. Typically, from an airport perspective... Typically, from an airport perspective, when we've had historical downturns in the past, Cherry Apple Capital Airport has been able to rebound from an activity perspective much quicker than what you typically would see in the market. COVID is a prime example, where we were, we were back above employment levels within a, within a year after the main downturn in COVID. Nine eleven, a little while ago, but that's also an example of a timeframe where we were able to recover a year or two from the standpoint of passenger activity much quicker than the other, than other airports in the market. Another thing that we do want to talk about, or we're talking through, is that, you know, the loss of an airline, if something like that should happen. One of the things that we know that we've got currently here up in Traverse City is the supply cannot yet meet the demand of the travelers that want to come to Traverse City. Between what we've got for carriers today, in particular, the, the three main carriers, we would see if the loss of an airline came through, those additional carriers picking up the slack to ensure that our traveling public is going to be able to get to their destinations as they, as they would expect. We also talk about from the standpoint of being able to meet our requirements for debt payments. Obviously, we have, we're going to have a plan on a debt reserve, which is going to be at least a one-year, one-year debt reserve amount based upon what we're going to schedule out, based upon what the bond sale is going to entail. Plus, all the fixed rental costs and rental charges that will continue to come in throughout the course of, of maybe that gap period will still remain. Going back again to crisis moments, you know, from the standpoint of when we were back in COVID, one of the main keys is to keep the transportation sectors open. And so in situations such as COVID, which we had back in 2020, we were provided additional funding to be able to keep the airport open and operating. It was at lower levels, but again, after that first year, we were right back up to where we were prior to COVID. And then finally, we do want to talk about, and we're going to continue to review, ongoing rate methodologies. We currently have a structured rate and charges process for our airlines, but that is something we are looking at, and that's also, that also relates to the rate covenant, which we're looking to have in place as well, which basically says, our rates and charges are going to be able to be in place to pay for our debt service. And based upon that, I'm going to pass that along to Pat McGow, who's currently on remotely. He'll talk a little bit more about the debt reserve and the rate covenants as well that we're looking to explore.
Great, thank you, Mark. Can you hear me there at the meeting? Okay, great, I can't quite see the slide. So this should say mitigation of county risk at the top. So basically, I'm Pat McGow. I am a bond attorney for Miller Canfield, working with the airport authority on this project. I was at that meeting in October, when many of you were present when we first started talking about this project and the financing. So I know there's been a lot of discussion and, and a lot of concern about mitigating risk to the county. The airport authority is asking the county to pledge its limited tax full faith and credit as backup security for the bonds, and that would mean if for some reason, with all of these revenues and projections and reserves, that there was not enough money to make the bond payment, the county would be asked to cover that shortfall on the bond payment. So what's on the screen here is essentially that particular covenant, which is the Revenue Bond Act sets forth how that works, which is if the revenues are not sufficient to make the payment, then the county would be asked to make the payment to cover the shortfall. And this would be a limited tax pledge, similar to your limited tax pledge on other bonds. I know that you have bonds issued for water and sewer projects, for township and city projects. And essentially, that means that the county would be asked to cover that with money from your existing taxes for any shortfall. It does not authorize you to levy taxes above your existing rate. Obviously, this is something that we don't ever expect to happen or want to happen, but this protection does give the bonds a better credit rating and security for bondholders in knowing that there is this backup, a secondary source of payment. The other thing I want to point out is that last sentence on the slide, which is, this is in the statute, and would also be in the bond documents, which says that if the county is required to make a payment from taxes or funds, it would then be reimbursed later from net revenues received by the operations of the airport. So the idea is that if there is a bad year or a situation that required county money to cover a shortfall, that would need to be paid back to the county from net revenues when they're available in full, and that's in the statute, and it will also be in the bond documents as well. Now, when I talk about the bond documents, we could go to the next slide. As part of the bond issuance process, there is a bond ordinance, which those of you that have been involved with county debt, this is similar to a bond authorizing resolution that you have adopted for your own debt. And the bond ordinance really sets forth the authorization of the bonds. It indicates what the pledge is, which in this case would be the net revenues of the airport. It indicates what the security for the bonds will be, which would be the pledge of the net revenues, as well as having a reserve fund, and then also the backup security pledge of the county as backup security for the bonds. The, the purpose of the, these other covenants is really to make the bondholders comfortable that if the revenues aren't available, they'll still get paid. And so there are a variety of things that are included in revenue bonds that are done to essentially give the bondholders additional comfort that if there's a bad year in operations, there's money available to make the payment, and they won't be shorted. This is done not only for the benefit of the bondholders, but in this case, since the airport authority is asking the county to be the backup security, this is something that also provides comfort and assurances to the county that you are not going to be asked to use your funds to cover a shortfall in the future. So we have had several conversations with the airport administration and the county administration, the county's bond council and financial advisor, about what some of these covenants will be in the bond documents to give additional comfort to the county that we're not going to need to draw upon your funds to cover a shortfall in the bond payment. And we've modeled these, some of these are pretty standard in the industry, whether it's airport revenue bonds or other types of revenue bonds. And we have actually modeled, as you know, some of these provisions in what is done in other airport revenue bond issues by other Michigan airports. As you know, the Kent County Airport, which was then converted into the Gerald R. Ford International Airport Authority, is very similar to this authority structure in terms of the same statute. The documents are similar. And in that case, the airport authority in Kent County also asks Kent County to pledge its limited tax full faith and credit as backup security. So Kent County has some of the same concerns initially that, that you have, which is we don't want to have, to pay for a shortfall on airport revenue bonds when you have your own debt and your own needs. And so there are provisions and protections put into that document and those transactions, and we are incorporating many of the same ones there. So one of the first protections, and I know that we had a memo that we submitted to the administration, so some of you have certainly heard this before, but I just want to kind of go over what some of these protections are and how this would work. So the first one we're going to talk about is a rate covenant. A rate covenant is something that requires the authority, airport authority, to set its rates each year in an amount necessary to cover its operating and maintenance expenses, and also to cover the debt service on the bonds. And usually, a rate covenant is something that's more than one hundred percent. So the idea is that you want a rate covenant that says that, you know, we're going to set our rates so that we should have more than one hundred percent of what we need to cover our debt service and our operating expenses. The idea is that if it's a bad year or something happens where the revenues are down, by setting the rates higher than what you think you need, that there will still be money there. And so what we're talking about here is a rate covenant that is something that's described as a rolling coverage, that essentially would say that the rates, when you look at what is going to be needed in the next year for operations, as well as debt service, that there is a surplus fund setup that will have at least twenty-five percent of the debt service requirements, and then the authority needs to set the rates to get at least a hundred percent plus that twenty-five percent. So it's effectively a one hundred twenty-five percent rate covenant that when budgeting and modeling for the fiscal year, this should result in revenues that is more than what's needed for operations as well as the payment on the debt service. If we could go to the next slide, which should say ordinance authorizing bonds, bond reserve account. So a bond reserve account is a account that is set aside at the airport authority, which is required to contain a certain amount of money that is only to be used in the event that there's a shortfall on debt. So the idea is that after using available funds of the airport and money in that surplus fund, if there was going to be a shortfall in making a payment, then the authority would be required to dip into that bond reserve account and use that to make payment to the bondholders. And there are various tax rules as to how large that account can be. Effectively, it's about a year's worth of debt service. So the idea is that the bond reserve account amount is set up when the bonds are, when the bond closing occurs, that money in that amount is set aside in that account, and then that would be available to be used in the event of a shortfall. That is funded either with cash or what's, what are called cash equivalents, like a surety bond. So the idea is that that money is there and available to be tapped in the event of a shortfall. Go to the next slide. The ordinance also has other covenants that are typical in airport revenue bonds to provide additional assurances. You know, these are things that, if you think about as a bondholder or you as the county who are essentially guaranteeing the payment, you want to know that things aren't going to be done to diminish the revenues of the airport, like selling off parts of it without certain approvals and things. And also, any additional bonds in the future, there are covenant ratios to authorize that. Now, that may not be as big a concern, because of course, any additional bonds that the authority would issue in the future would also need to come back to you for approval under both, under the articles, and so that would have to come back to you anyway. But there are various things that are in the bond ordinance that are intended to provide protections and reassurance to bondholders and to the county that the net revenues will not be diminished and should be there and available to pay debt service. So, big picture, you know, what does this all mean together? So, you know, we've got a requirement, and there was a slide a couple earlier that Sean Walsh showed that, showed the expected coverage of, of two times coverage, meaning that there is at least two times available net revenues projected to cover the debt service. But what we're all worried about is some bad incident. You know, a nine eleven is incident where, you know, flights are delayed or limited. COVID, something else that causes disruption in the airline industry, the airport industry, that leads to a diminution of revenues. And again, as Mark had said, that, you know, we've seen those in the past, the airport has recovered, but that's really what we're worried about, and that's what we're trying to protect here. So the idea is that first, the airport rate covenant is essentially set up to provide that the expected revenues are going to be more than enough to cover the operations and expenses as well as the debt service. There's going to be a surplus fund that is there to tap into if for some reason those revenues are not producing enough revenue. If they get to the point where those funds are diminished and other available funds of the airport are diminished, then the second course of action would be to tap into that bond reserve account. Now, that bond reserve account has at least, or approximately one year's worth of debt service. But the idea would be that if there's a shortfall, it wouldn't be zero revenues, it might be some percentage less than that. So that bond reserve account is going to cover debt service for at least a year, if not more, depending upon what a possible shortfall would be. During that time, under the rate covenant, the airport authority would be required to bump up its rates to try to get back to that hundred twenty-five percent. So between those two things, hopefully, that any revenue shortfall would be able to be obtained. But if we get to the point where that bond reserve account is totally depleted and diminished, then at that point, would the airport authority need to call upon the county for the limited tax pledge? In which case, the county would be asked to cover that shortfall. Once whatever revenue crisis is over, then any additional revenues, and, and again, the authority would need to raise revenues to get back to the point where it's generating that hundred twenty-five percent, and then pay back any amount that the county contributed back to the county general fund to reimburse the county for that shortfall. So that's essentially how these provisions work together to lead to a result that it is not expected that the county would be asked or need to provide funds. There are other sources of funds that would be tapped. And also, there's, with that, there is an early warning system, because any draw on that bond reserve account would require notices to be made, and that would allow for a discussion as to, you know, what the plan is, at what point would the authority return to full funding, et cetera. So these are the types of provisions that are available in other types of airport revenue bonds, and this is what we would plan to include in the bond ordinance for the airport authority for this revenue bond issue. With that, I'm going to turn it back over to Sean to talk about.
Are you available for questions at this time?
We could do questions now or at the end, sure.
Let's save them for the end, because I'm sure everybody's got a ton, so write her down.
Awesome, thank you, Pat. So, you know, as, as Pat just talked about, there are two different credit structures here. And, you know, given where revenues are, are projected to come in and what we're looking at here, we've modeled out what it would look like with the county full faith and credit, with the county's backing, and then if the airport were to go out to the market and issue without that credit. And so to understand really the benefit to the airport, you know, in terms of financing, excuse me, and costs, we really needed to weigh those two options. So we did some pretty detailed credit work and came back with an understanding or an estimate that the airport revenue on its own standalone, without the county full faith and credit, would come in at the B double A two range, which is still investment grade, but lower on the investment grade spectrum. So what does that mean? You know, as I mentioned, that, that credit impact is a direct impact on the cost of borrowing. You know, it's our expectation that, you know, at this point too, both scenarios would require the funding of a debt service reserve fund, which Pat just talked in detail about. You know, so that will, you know, increase the cost of borrowing. And so when, when you look at the two credits in today's market, it's about a half percent to three-quarters of a percent difference, or higher in interest rate cost for the authority to issue on its own. If you put that into the model or into the full perspective of what we're talking about here for the capital plan with all of these assumptions, that's about six hundred and thirty-two dollars, six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars per year in additional borrowing, and additional interest cost that would be associated with issuing on its own. So that's over almost eighteen million dollars over the life of the bond issue. So again, we've just got some different comparisons here with the two scenarios, assuming, you know, the full faith and credit in the county's double A plus rating versus a standalone rating of the airport authority. And just for those folks that like graphics, this is just a graphic depiction of that, right? So it just shows a comparison year over year of what those two credits would, would generally yield in today's market. With that, I will throw it back to the airport.
Well, thank you, thank you to the team for presenting all that information. So when we look at the airport itself, and we look at some of the different ratios that are there, you know, I like to say, what is the typical ratio that is the great ratio? You've heard about two point one four. What is the typical ratio that is good to go to the bond market? That ratio is one point two five. So it's definitely greater than that, and we're excited that it's greater than that, especially with the, the assurances of risk that are taken by the covenants that are put in place. But as we go forward and we talk about our partnership, and our partnership being for the full faith and credit, let's really look at the, the long history again, as the airport as a community asset. As our community grows, so does the airport, but as our airport grows, so does the community. The airport contributes over one billion dollars to the local economy each year. The airport makes the region more attractive to businesses, not only in the state of Michigan, but from all over the country. So many times I hear, whether it's from our healthcare system, our teachers, that they move to our region because we have an airport that can take them anywhere. The airport creates direct employment opportunities, not only with our pilots, our ground staff, air traffic controllers, security personnel, maintenance crews, but also indirectly supports so many jobs. I like to tell the story because March is a timeframe that we have unpredictable snowstorms. I go back to March of 2012, when the state of emergency that was declared by the county took place. The airport was called multiple times by pharmacies across. took place, the airport was called multiple times by pharmacies across our region that they needed insulin. FedEx was that source. They couldn't get it via highway. They wanted to make sure when we opened back up at 6:00 a.m., those flights could arrive at 6:00 a.m. to bring that in. The airport is a major resources to our way of life. Our forecasted growth, the conservative growth that has taken place in our model is just that and alone, very conservative. However, the last two months, if anything, if you haven't seen in the news, we've grown in January 30%. We grew also in February, another almost double-digit to almost 20%. We sold our entire parking lot out in the last week of February. The last week of February is typically our lowest off-peak time of the year, and yet our parking lot was 100% full. So, we used very conservative assumptions in our model, and we look to continue to grow at this rate. Daily, I am receiving calls from the airlines about increasing seats to continue for our capacity growth. It's really interesting to watch this because, as Mark pointed out, if there was a loss of air service in their capacity, it's a very simple economic supply and demand. We have not yet reached the supply that our demand requires. That's why our air service is growing, and it continues to grow and be successful. When we look at what our airlines need, the airlines are actually asking us for 15 total gates now, today. Once we implement this additional gate structure, we will only be at nine. We're very, being very conservative in our growth to make sure we don't outpace what's going on. As the FAA says, we can build for what passengers are using today. We cannot build what for a forecast in the future, we build for what's today. Our potential growth, though, as we've seen, just because we're here today, our terminal was built in 2004, an operational 2004, for about half the volume of passengers that we're seeing. It was built for about 350,000. We saw in 2024, 787,114. So, just by having the building itself, just by seeing what could be potential growths. So, when we look at our average January commercial flights, we're seeing about 30 commercial flights in a day. Summertime, using 24 numbers, is 72. So, we estimate by average winter flights of 40 in 2034 and 80, just based on a historical perspective. What we've seen, though, more is not really more aircraft using the airport, what we've seen is larger, more economically, environmentally friendly type aircraft that are using the airport. Instead of seeing 50-seat regional jets, we're now seeing 166-seat mainline aircraft. So, what are we looking at from a community experience? The additional relief, the overcrowding. I'll just go back and show you the quick pictures, the overcrowding that takes place in the terminal. So, we're going to have that direct impact. There is no tree removal. We are working with all of our local agencies. One of the greatest things about creating the airport authority is we created airport zoning. That airport zoning group has brought in the three surrounding municipalities to participate with on-airport zoning. But one of the awesome things that was also created was by this county and joint with Leonol County, a joint zoning board for land uses and airspace uses around the area. We've improved our partnerships, not only with Beta but the city itself, and really working on our sustainable relationships to improve the overall economic impact of the area. So, when we look at going forward, we greatly appreciate the county's partnership, we greatly appreciate you doing your diligence of looking at this bond offer, and thank you for considering the full faith and credit. At this time, we're open for questions with anybody that's on the group.
I would like to highlight that Roger Swets and Stephen Burke are here as well on behalf of the county. Subsequent to the meeting we had in closed session, we had two or three conversations with both Roger and Stephen, and they have created a memo that is in the packet as well. But I wanted to highlight the fact that they're here in the event that you want to hear from them.
Awesome. So, bear with me a moment, Mr. Hensel. Mr. Andrews, I'm going to guess, I don't know how I could guess this, that you have lots of questions?
Just, just a handful.
Just a handful. So, what I'm going to propose is that everybody else get a fresh shot at it, because these wonderful, and then you can back clean up. So, and Mr. Hensel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, my understanding, and I'm just kind of restate the obvious, but it might not be obvious to everyone, and you can correct me if I have a wrong assumption, but what the airport is asking for, and in full disclosure, I sit on the airport board, but I'm putting on my commissioner hat now as a county commissioner. The airport is asking the county, as the largest municipality in the area that it serves, to back the bonds with our AA+ bond rating, which is basically cheaper interest. We're, you know, like, kind of like cosigning a loan because, you know, we're the bigger parent or, you know, more stable parent to a smaller municipality, you know, for kind of a layman's example. By doing that, can you summarize briefly verbally what that does for this project financially?
I'll let the experts go in detail, but it's an $18 million savings, really, at the bottom line. When you look at it and the cost of issuing those bonds, it's an $18 million savings to the airport of doing that. And I, with all the covenants in place, the risk is very low for the county, and so, we want it to work very hard to ensure that that would happen. And so, going back, it's all established in the articles incorporation of the authority and the relationship to the prior ownership of the airport with the two counties.
Okay. Now, I also sit on the Buildings and Grounds Committee for the airport, and so, we've had these discussions, and I'm kind of regurgitating, but also giving you opportunity as the airport staff to correct anything I might have a misgiving about. But my understanding is that $18 million goes back into making a nice airport. One of the nice comments we always hear is the layout of the airport, the aesthetics, the fireplace room, the design, all of the extras. And it's my understanding that by doing this, our county residents will benefit by having a nicer airport, a more attractive airport. It also attracts people that might be tempted to fly at another airport to save $10, $20 by driving downstate. They want to go to a nice airport. The more people that fly at our airport, the more flights become available from our airport, direct flights all over. So, what we're asking the county to do, what the airport is asking this board to do, is to consider backing those bonds to create a extra pool of money to increase the quality of our airport. Does that sum it up?
That's a great summary in basically saying, if we don't have to spend money on interest and bond cost, we can spend that in investment in our airport, which, as Christina talked about, at the end of the day, it reduces the cost per passenger for the carriers, so it reduces their costs. So, not having to spend that additional money is a direct benefit for all use of the airport, correct?
So, the goal is more, more direct flights, cheaper flights for those in this area, and a nicer airport overall. So, there's definitely a benefit to the residents of Grand Traverse County and the entire region should we do this. So, now the next question, and I think most of the questions to come will be in order of, how do we best protect the county's individual interests and balance that with the overall interest? So, one of the concerns when, I think it was Pat was speaking about the bond revenues, pledge is made and the net, this is if, if the pledge is made and the net revenue primarily pledged to the payment is insufficient, the county kicks in. What if the airport has cash reserves in addition to the net revenue? Is that also going to be in the wording? And I'll give you just kind of an example. You know, say we have a couple tough years, it happens every decade or so, and, you know, the county's been saving up for a new roof for the civic center, and the airport's been saving up for a new parking structure, and the net revenues are insufficient. Does the county have to give up its new roof for the civic center, or does the airport have to give up its new parking structure?
All airport sources are used first before we would come back to any county resources. That's correct.
All right. So, it includes cash reserves, even though that's not, it wasn't worded on the slide that way. It just says revenue, which, you know, tends to mean money coming in that year. So, I guess that's where I was looking for a little more definition.
Absolutely. So, if you look at the order of it, and Pat, feel free to jump in, but the order of it comes for when we have to take all of our revenue in, we pay our operational maintenance costs in debt service first. So, all of our revenue has to remedy that first. So, at some point, if we could not do that, one, the airport would almost have to be, I'll say destitute in a way, to not be able to do that. But that's where the fallback provisions are and the covenants that are in there. That's correct.
All right. Could you give me the, maybe Pat could give the definition of revenue? Does that mean all the money in the coffers, or does it mean the money that's coming in right now?
That would be all of our cash reserves, that would be all of the money that is coming in. That, yes, that is everything that the airport does.
Okay. So, cash reserves are included in the definition of revenue?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Let me, let me just jump in on that a little bit, just to kind of expand a little bit. So, and as you know, the airport has a variety of funds, but one of the things I also talked about in the rate covenant was a surplus fund. And then there are other funds available to the airport. Now, the definition of revenue includes a variety of things, including the airline revenues, the non-airline revenues, investment earnings on those funds. I would say the one caveat is, to the extent there are federal grant funds or things that are specifically required to be used to pay for capital projects, you know, that wouldn't be able to be tapped, but money that the airport authority has, that it has set aside in other funds that don't have those restrictions, would be tapped and available for use to cover a shortfall in debt service.
Thank you.
Commissioner Nelson?
I'll probably have some comments, but I'm going to wait and listen to my fellow commissioners, see what they have to say. But I've been through, I don't really have any questions about this. I've been through it a bunch of times and really have a pretty good grasp on it, so I'm sure that other people's questions will raise some thoughts to my own.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Spence?
So, my understanding is the bond reserve amount will be in the amount necessary to cover approximately one year of debt service. Is that what, just kind of building off of what Commissioner Hensel just asked, is this the same, is this what you're saying, is that there's enough to cover one year of debt service if there's any kind of pandemic or there's a economic downturn?
Yeah. So, when you, or Pat, did you want to?
Yeah. Yeah. Let me jump in on that. So, yes, I mean, so there is a, bond reserve accounts are very common in a variety of types of revenue bonds and other situations. And the IRS has a rule that says how much can be set inside of this bond reserve account without, you know, having issues with, with the earnings. But essentially, it's a three-part test. It's roughly the lesser of the maximum annual debt service, 125% of the average annual debt service, or 10% of the principal amount of the bonds. So, that is calculated at the time the bonds are priced and sold, so we know what those numbers are. But that's why we say it's approximately one year's of debt service. For some airports, it may be the maximum annual debt service. For others, it's 125% of the average annual. But that number is determined at the time of sale, and then the money would be set aside in that account as of the closing of the bond issue and remain in that account. And of course, that's going to earn, potentially could earn interest, and then that money also is available as revenue for the airport as well.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions at this time. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Flynn?
I have a few. I'm looking at a graph that was also part of an email that states that in 2024, 3.11 million were for auto parking, but projected for 2034 is 9.7. I heard Commissioner Hensel touch on saving for a parking garage, but I also heard no trees being knocked down. So, I'm wondering what that plan is to, I mean, that's a lot, a lot of money in a few years, for 10 years of parking.
Well, one, there's lots to talk about parking garage, and that is many, many moons down the road. When you look at what's available for additional parking, we have current spot or current lots in our master plan that have yet to be constructed that are in areas with no tree impact. One of the quick discussions because of in February when we filled it was where can we go immediately? And that area would be north of Costco with the ability that would impact that area that is a flat land at its time.
Okay. Thank you. I heard Ricondo, I'm sorry, I didn't get everyone's names correctly, but mentioned environmental plans. Is that part of something you're also doing for the airport authority?
No, we're not serving in that role for this particular project.
Okay. I'm going to touch on, my, my district really surrounds a lot of the airport, so I'm wondering if that info, that we'll seek any info on noise pollution study, air pollution, anything like that, that will be coming up to our, to the board?
Yes. So, as part of getting into this planning process, going back to 2019, a noise analysis was done forecasting through this. That is available, that was approved by the FAA, and it actually showed, going back to Kevin's point, with newer aircraft, some of those noise contours shrinking, but that is additional information we can provide, but it has been studied and approved by the FAA.
I would really like to see that.
Yep.
I appreciate that the constituents of our county would have a nicer airport, which I appreciate, but I don't think we need all the bells and whistles, especially since a lot of my constituents don't often fly, period. So, I'll just put that out there, that, you know, cost savings there would be really greatly appreciated. Any idea if there's any help that the authority could do with Town Line Road since that will probably increase traffic?
I would love to help Town Line Road. We've actually been working that, on that and partnering with East Bay Township and Garfield Township. As Christina said earlier, grant assurances don't allow us to divert revenue. However, we are looking at different avenues for which we can participate through the MPO and some of the other avenues to try to get revenue that way. We've brought the FAA out and toured Town Line Road with them, and they see the need in itself. So, I don't have a solution like that, I've got the golden answer right now, but we want to be a partner to that solution, and we're looking at all avenues because Town Line Road is very, very important to the entrance of the airport. So, yes, we want to be there.
And finally, I know that we've all heard there's, you know, financial of the country and recession possibly coming forward is on the horizon. I would love to see info from, you know, you said that TBC always bounces back quickly. So, if there's any kind of data or anything that shows that it bounced back quickly during the 2008, 2012, that would be appreciated.
Definitely.
But more so, there's lots of other projects. We have this facilities master plan that we're, you know, we're working on. New jail is something we're always talking about. I guess this is probably for administration or Dean, how would this affect future products that we want to work on as a board?
If I could.
Bond.
Yes. Stephen Burke and Roger did an analysis of that. They had presented that during the study session. I can't exactly remember the level of debt that they were concerned about, but it was fairly significant before our AA+ was reduced. Roger or Stephen, do you have that at your fingertips?
I do. This is Stephen Burke with MFCI. So, the first level of additional debt in, and again, this is holding everything steady at, call it, December of 2024 information, was that if the county added an additional $50 million in debt on top of the airport's proposed bonds, that that would begin to push the estimated impact on the county's credit towards a range where a downgrade could be possible while we think that's still unlikely. The addition of somewhere between 100 and $125 million of debt would be substantial enough to likely ensure that a downgrade was likely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
That it, Commissioner Flynn?
That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McAllister?
How you doing? Thanks for the airport. The, the bill, the 1.2 trillion for the spending and stuff, there's 550 billion for new spending. Do you anticipate that going away? Is it going to be available? They're cutting a lot of stuff. Is that something you're counting on?
So, the bill funding and the programs that are in place, what's going, currently going through on the FAA side, and it was in the House bill that was passed yesterday, is the $4 billion that is for the airport improvement program. So, our enti- is the $4 billion that is for the Airport Improvement Program. So our entitlement dollars, our AIG dollars are all part of that program, and the normal discretionary spending. So from an airport side, with the current bill in the House, I'm very comfortable with the programs going forward. We also worked with the FAA and the airport's district office back in October and gave them this same presentation and the dollars that were needed. And the FAA, on their portion of federal grants, has said that they'll step to the plate to ensure those dollars are available for construction.
Well, that's good news. So on, on your reserve of 125% for the, where does that come from? Is that a borrowed piece, or can you tell us?
That's really from our rates and charges. So we, we build our cash reserves from our rates and charges. So that will be set aside on that. So if you look at like this past last year budget, setting aside for those reserve account, I think we did 2.5 million or somewhere in that, that ballpark, 2.4. So yes, that, that reserve fund's building. Thank you.
Okay. And you said you had examples of failures of, of airports that failed, not just 9/11 and COVID. Are there examples of airports that have failed that have just been, hey, we're ready to expand, we're doing well, and don't quite hit the mark? Do you know of any? I guess I would ask that.
Christina, maybe? Do you know of any that, that haven't hit the mark?
So I can speak to the environment. COVID was even more severe than 9/11 from a financial perspective and airline perspective. So during that time, the, the airports were able to figure out different solutions. We all know there was also quite a bit of grant funding that went into that. And I think airports across the country are preparing that if there were another episode like that, you could not rely on a similar level of grant funding. And so that's where you see some of those cash reserves build up. There's different types of rate-setting methodologies with different rules and around that, that each airport sets and sometimes in agreement with the airlines. And so that can govern how airports would then tap into money that would be available to, to meet the demands. It's usually still a net revenue base, and that net revenue means that the revenue that comes in has to cover operating costs first and then hits debt service. What we did see is airports, unlike many revenue credits, there's a lot of different levers that airports have in order to try and mitigate some of that. So for example, how can O&amp;M be handled? Is there capital projects that can be deferred? Are there revenue streams that aren't being tapped into? Those types of things allow the airports to come up with different ways to handle those downturns. I'm going to let PFM handle if they're aware of any airports that have recently had any issues. I know we, we have written bond feasibility reports for almost $40 billion worth of airport debt with many different issuances and many different airport sizes. I'm not aware of any one of those that was not able to make their debt service payment and relying on airport revenues.
Awesome. Thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Sorry, you know, not, not to the best of our knowledge, but again, we will follow up and let you know if there are.
Excellent. Thanks.
Commissioner Walter?
Thanks. Thanks for being here. I love TVC. I love flying out of there. Always appreciate it. So I just have a few questions, and some of my questions were already answered, but also brought up more questions. So I'm kind of about the same number of questions for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McAllister, for bringing up the issue about the grant funding. Mr. Klein, you said that you've had conversations with the FAA. They sound positive about committing to this project, but is there any kind of real commitment other than conversations? I'm a little worried about the reliance on over $50 million of grant funding, given the situation at the federal government and dismantling of things.
I have the best assurances that the federal government is willing to give. And I know that does not like
It doesn't give me much. No, it doesn't. No.
I'll, I'll look at it this way. I go back to the history of what's funded, that has been funded at the airport. And so when we look at discretionary funding, the last time the airport has asked for discretionary funding was 2006. So with looking at all the projects that have been done and the investments in the airport, you know, we're looking at, and again, I'll just give an off-the-cuff estimate, exact could be given forward, of around about $30 million in that timeframe, maybe a little bit more of runway improvements, you know, taxiway improvements, firefighting equipment, snow removal equipment, et cetera. So what does that mean? Well, when you're looking at competing against for discretionary funding, if an airport hasn't received discretionary funding in nearly 20 years, our number's at the top of the list. So we're going to compete very well for that. So the FAA making that commitment to us is a pretty solid commitment.
I don't share your same enthusiasm, but.
I know. Yeah. And, and as Bob whispered in my ear, correct is, is, you know, what we're doing, our plan is to build to the budget that, that we have. So we're, we know when we, that's one of the great things about having CMAR, is we'll break down each, this total project into, I think we're already talking five smaller projects, to go for the grants. So we'll be building each project at a time needing those grants. And so we can't build forward outside of those grants. So grant has to be in place before we can construct. So we have to build to budget.
Well, speaking of budget, it was mentioned that, I can't remember, was it Christina? I'm sorry if I got your name. Okay, great. You mentioned that airports around the country are seeing this potential pullback in grant funding or, you know, possibly not as much in that they're building up cash reserves in the face of that?
I was talking more, and I think I did use the word grant funding, and that was a mistake on my part. I'm talking more about the, what I'll characterize as bailout money, the funds that become available when, so the airlines got quite a bit of funding, whistle commitments of keeping employees intact during 2020, 2021. Airports also got a significant amount of funding. That helped airports weather some of that. That is the, the mentality of airports, I think, are preparing if something as severe as COVID were to happen for the airport and airline industry to be even more prepared and reserving more cash on hand in order to try and mitigate some of that.
So the airports collectively are just not expecting as much of a bailout as maybe they had in the past, so they're working on their cash reserves?
So what's interesting with airports is there's a lot of different stakeholders, and some of them kind of push and pull on each other. So investors in the bonds, and as your position would be, backing the bonds, making sure that there's enough revenue that's there in order to pay the bonds. That's an interest to, to generate revenue. You also have airlines that don't want to pay a bunch of their money to have an airport sit on cash reserves. So there's airline agreements to be able to push, to control some of that in particular situations. You also have passengers who want to be able to have reasonable prices for the types of services that they're paying for at the airport. So all that combined is, is an equation that airports are looking at of how do we balance those needs and interests in order to also still build up some reserve funds. And what, all that community has come to accept more than pre-COVID is that there is a need to build up some of those cash reserves. And so airports that are in the position to be able to do that are doing that more. So makes sense?
Yeah, it does. So that kind of tees up the question I have for Mr. Klein then is, what has TVC been doing to that, to build up cash reserves in the face of that? And do you share that same perspective?
Yes. And so prior to COVID, we had a cash reserves of a little over 3.4 million. Today, we sit on a cash reserves of about 16.8. So that is our, we've been growing our, we've basically quadrupled our cash reserves since prior to COVID. So yes, we are following that same.
Okay. Just a couple more questions then. The, Commissioner Henshaw asked about, you know, if, if we help with the bonding versus the airport, that it would lead to lower flights? Is that a guarantee for our people?
It offsets the cost of operating at the airport. So we've seen that transition. The more we've offset those costs, the lower our fares have come down. So over the last 10, I'll say even 15 years, our average airfare has dropped almost $30 each way.
Okay. I have a couple more, but I'm going to let some other people take a turn. Go ahead.
Commissioner Morris?
Well, pretty much everybody has asked all the questions so far that I wanted to. So I guess I wanted to just kind of make sure that, for clarity, that what you're asking is, the airport is responding to growth that's already occurring right now. And what you're asking us is to get on board and help facilitate a more financially efficient way of meeting current needs for travelers, right?
Correct. Thank you for clarifying it that way. That's a great way to put it.
That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Andrews?
Thank you. Thank you for being here. I appreciate the, the information. I appreciate that your attorney asked me ahead of time what my concerns were, and I think you've done a nice job of trying to address them, particularly my concern related to risk mitigation to the county as we're facing some substantial bonding on our own behalf for some county priorities. I wanted to ask, is it, is it Mr. McGow, or is there an N at the end there?
Nope. McGow, yes, Pat McGow.
Okay, sorry. Thank you, Mr. I think Mr. McGow mentioned that by authorizing these bonds, the county would not be authorizing higher taxes. Did I hear that correctly?
I think what I said was that a limited tax general obligation pledge means that you are required to use your available taxing powers, but you're not authorized to raise taxes above your existing tax rates authorized by law. So in other words, you would not be able to raise taxes above the existing statutory rates that the county now has, as opposed to a voted bond issue, which is considered to be an unlimited tax general obligation, where you are allowed to levy a special debt millage above your existing tax rates to pay debt service. So think about how schools vote bonds, they get to levy a debt millage. This type of a bond would not allow for a special debt millage.
So let me make sure I understand that. As I understand it, the debt service is about an average of 5.5 million a year for these bonds. Some years a little higher, some years a little lower. Is that a right, fair number? So let's, let's assume for, for, and I'm looking at slide 23, which I think is what you were referring to when you talked about that issue. And I'm in particular looking at the second sentence of the first paragraph where it says basically that the county, quote, "will levy, when necessary, a tax on all taxable property and the corporation without limit as to the rate or amount, in addition to other taxes that we're authorized to levy," section seven of the Revenue Bond Act. So let's assume, for purposes of conversation, that in 2030, for whatever reason, the airport was not able to make its payment at all. And let's assume it's a $5 million number. That's 10% of our general revenue, general fund budget annually. So now the county is obligated to cover that in 2031. Do I understand that the county would have to increase our, our taxes in order to cover that additional 10% to come out of our general fund? And that's maybe a question for, for our finance, or it's a question for you. Just trying to understand the, the authority here.
Yeah. So the, the requirement is you would, you have an obligation to pay from available taxes and to raise taxes up to your maximum rate authorized in order to cover a shortfall. It does not allow you to go above the maximum rate that you're authorized to levy under law.
And what is the maximum? Are we at the maximum?
We, we are currently adjusted for headly on an annual basis if necessary.
So in that scenario, correct me if I'm wrong, we would have to find $5 million out of our budget to cut in order to pay these bonds, right?
Correct, if you're at your maximum levy.
And, and that's after a reserve fund would be.
After your reserve fund, right.
So, you know, at least.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure I understood what you meant by, it wouldn't authorize us to go above our headly maximum. But it would require us to cut other funding in order to cover that after the first year, right?
It would. The same way the other limited tax pledges you have on bonds, that's a, a first budget obligation, yes.
Yeah. I wanted to, to follow up about the grant funding sources. I understood at slide 19, and I'm just going by the numbers because they weren't, the slides themselves don't have a number, so just the page number, looks, as you mentioned, there's 51.7 in anticipated grant funding over the course of the next three years. You might bring that slide up if whoever's controlling. Is that something we can control? So, so on slide 19, there's 51 million. On slide 12, there was a reference to the grant analysis that, the two, right, the Airport Improvement Program entitlement grants and the bipartisan, the bill grants. Those are entitlement grants. As I read it on slide 12, there's a total of 18 million in entitlement grants. Sounds about right? So, so by my math, there's about a $30 million anticipated in discretionary grants, correct?
Correct.
To the point that's been raised, discretionary grants appear to me, all verbal assurances notwithstanding, the first to go, right? If, if the federal government were, say, in bringing a chainsaw to the budget and wanted to reduce budgets, probably discretionary grants are going to go before entitlements, correct?
That is typical, but that is not the current bill that's being passed through the House.
Okay. Is there a covenant that can get added to our bonding ordinance that is being anticipated that would require federal grants before bonding? And my concern here is we bond, there's basically a line of credit for 60 to 70 million, we build half a terminal, we don't get federal grants, and we've got a useless half a terminal, and now we're bonding for the rest. So how can we get assurances on the front end before we sink costs into bonding?
Yeah. I, I don't know if we legally can with the way grant funding and the grant assurances work. I'd have to look into that and get you an answer on that. But what we've done historically in the past, and the Airport Authority has operated this way, and even the grants, when they're issued, operate this way. It gets back to Bob's point, we can't build outside of our grants. So as the project goes forward and grants are issued, we can't do anything to grants in hand. So we can't break ground until we have the grant. We can't, we can't go forward. So there is checks and balances with the issuance of federal money. And it is the plan to use as many grant sources first and reduce the overall obligation of the bond at the end of the day. So I know what you're saying, grants first, and that is how we operate. But is there a mechanism that I'll have to get back with you? Because I, we got grant assurances, legal avenues, and we'd have to probably consult FAA legal on that.
So I guess I'm not asking for the grants to promise that they're going to give them to us. I'm asking the airport to promise that it'll spend the grant money first. What, basically what you're saying here, can we reduce that? And I don't, can we reduce that to a covenant in a, in an ordinance that you're, that's a required?
I'm going to look to legal counsel. Yeah, Pat, I don't know.
Um, I, I, usually the way this works is that before we go out with the issuance of a bond, we look at what the sources are. You know, you've got the grants, the bond funds, cash, and there is that chart there that shows what the anticipated sources of those different things. So some of those grants are specific to certain parts of the project. So, you know, those can only be spent on that. So I, I don't know how the timing works in terms of what projects are going first. I mean, other than the design and things, in terms of the construction, to be able to say that we would absolutely spend all the grant money first. I think also there's a requirement that the bond proceeds are spent within a reasonable amount of time. So, but I think in terms of the planning and putting this together, the idea would be that we would know what those sources of funding are, have those allocated for the specific aspects of the project, and then move forward with those. Certainly, it's in, you know, the and then move forward with those. Certainly, it's in, you know, the incentive is to, you know, when we get the grant funds, to spend those as quickly as possible. But, you know, it's gonna kind of depend on the phasing of the projects and which grant funds are available for which aspects. So, I don't know that we could say we're gonna absolutely spend all the grant money first because some of those are requirements for specific aspects of the project.
And the concern I have is that we build parts of the project that don't have value until we get the grants, like having an apron but no terminal, or holding, having a holdroom with no apron, right? They're both gotta happen. Having one but not the other is a problem.
No, that is actually governed through the FAA. The FAA won't allow us to do one without the other. They won't allow us to build, like you say, the bridge to nowhere.
Right.
They won't allow us to do that. That would be covered by grant funding. That's part of the grant assurances.
So, all I'm asking is that what you're saying at the podium here, to the extent permissible by law, be incorporated into a covenant that everyone is responsible for?
I think that's very reasonable to ask, and I think it's, that's how we operate, so yes. If I can legally do it, and with your help, I think we'll be able to get there. So, thanks.
There's no reason not to, right?
Exactly.
So, another question I have relates to the impact to the county. So, to my mind, there's three areas of risk. One is the grants don't materialize. Another is the county has some substantial capital, and frankly, probably maintenance needs in the hopper that are gonna require bonding. I understood, and our, Mr. Burke, 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 Flaherty, Burke, is that I understand it, you opined that once the county spends $50 million over and above bonds, 50 million, over and above the airport, we are, quote, "in danger of returning to AA level." $50 million would include, say, 15 million for a storage and dispatch facility on the, on the Lefraniere Hill, and that would leave about 35 million, at which point we have now notched down, right? From double A, I mean, from AA plus to AA. Is that based on December 2024 analysis? Is that right, Mr. Burke?
So, the S&amp;P's scoring will score out, that's the trip point where we land right in between a double A plus and a double A, which will then give the S&amp;P committee discretion to move that rating either up or down. I say 50 million because that's the level where we land in that in-between zone, and they're going to have discretion. I certainly think that at 50 million, it would be highly unlikely that we would go down at that point, but the scorecard is going to give that opportunity. If there's 50 million with another 100 million that's being communicated to them in upcoming capital projects, they may take that into consideration and move the county down. Again, I don't think that that's likely, but I think if the county is coming forward with 100 million or 125 million of additional projects over a handful of years, and we communicate that to the rating agencies because that's the county's plan, then the risk is certainly going to be much higher. Can't say exactly what they're gonna do, but I think at that $50 million level, that's when the score changes. And that's, that's just in their quantitative scoring system.
And Steve, if I could just ask a question now, that's, that's a dynamic number, right? So, that's 50 million more of debt, but less whatever existing debt's paid off by the time that's issued.
Correct. So, that's, that's a static look in time. And again, this, these are based on the county's per capita amount of debt, the county's outstanding pension obligations fall into the debt category as well. So, all of these are moving numbers that will change, but just kind of generally giving you some, some guideposts in mind. That would certainly bring, you know, bring the scorecard to a point where there will be some discretion about whether it falls to one side or the other.
So, in addition to saying that the county would be in danger of returning to AA at $50 million, you also said that the impact of that would be between 5 and 10 basis points. Is that still your position as to what the impact of going from AA plus to AA would be?
5 to 10 basis points across the curve is, is accurate for today. As interest rates change, you know, that, that amount can change. And as the interest rate environments change, that amount can change, but that's, that's accurate as of today.
So, if, if the county, let's say, we think of it as a pipe with a certain amount of capacity at a high rate, and then we bump down to, you know, tranche A, we get to use up our bond rating, our AA plus that we've worked really hard to get to, with 60 to 70 million dollars in bonding for the airport, and then that bumps some of the future projects, new bonding projects, down to a lower level. And then that ends up costing us between 5 and 10 basis points. Let's assume that that materializes. That would be an additional cost. So, let's say we were building, say, a law enforcement center. The cost, the savings at the airport, that 18 million, 600,000 a year for 30 years, 18 million in savings to the airport would turn into a, potentially, an additional cost to the county, right?
Yeah, so, but, oh, sorry.
Well, I, just to answer, I think generally correct, the spread between the airport's current credit, or estimated current credit, and the county's is obviously much larger than one notch. But I think generally, that is an accurate statement.
And so, my question is, who is doing that math? Is that something the airport has done? So, you know, there's a net, right, and 17.4 of a $30 million savings to the airport, but net cost to the county as a result of that bump on the next tranche of, of potential bonding? Is that, is that our job, Mr. Burke and Mr. Swets, or is that the, who's, who's doing that math?
I mean, that's what we're hiring these guys to do.
Is that right?
Yeah, so I think that, I think that math is based on the airport's consultants' estimate of the difference in interest cost between the two different rating levels that the airport bonds would be issued at, whether they were pure revenue bonds or GO bonds. And, you know, I think Steve has looked at that, but I won't put words in your mouth, Steve, but you're generally.
Yeah, correct. And I don't think we disagree necessarily with the, the spread between the airport's extra additional cost if they were to do this as revenue only. So, the net result, you know, between that, if, if the county were to be downgraded, you know, based on Sean's slide and PFM's slide there earlier, you know, that would be a, a net, you know, a net 65 basis points advantage if they were saying, you know, 3/4 of a percent better. So, the net result, you know, to the county would be 65 basis points better instead of 75 if, if the county were to be downgraded. What, what we don't have is, you know, the dollar amount of future county debt issues. I think that that's what's being studied. So, hard to, to say exactly what that would be because obviously, there's a lot of timing involved there. But just, just for, to use a round number, you know, 10, 10 basis points is, would, would be $1,000 a year on a million dollars.
So, I guess my, my question, after we sort of figured out what that net number, potential of increased cost to the county as a result of a downgrade, should that materializes, is there a mechanism where we can shift that, all or some of that cost back to the airport? Let's say it costs the county an extra 300,000 a year because of a downgrade. Is that a cost the airport would be willing to split with us?
It would not be legal to do that.
You can't legally?
It'd be, it'd be revenue diversion to do that, to pay your debt.
So, you, sorry, just let me clarify. You are, the airport cannot.
We'd be, that would be revenue diversion paying the county debt. We cannot do that per federal law.
Can the, but the airport could bond directly, say, 50% of the 70 million at B, B, at their bond rating, right? So, you could bond some, and we could bond some, and we could then split the cost, the net incremental cost to the county that way. That's not a diversion from the, from federal resources, right?
It would be a way to do that, yeah. We'd have to take a look at it, but we have not studied it in that format.
Is that something we could look at? I mean, we're gonna be looking at some projects coming up. If there's a way to split the, the risk, right, of a downgrade between the airport and the county, that's something we should be looking at, right? County, I mean, I would think.
I just want to be clear that, you know, I think we should, you know, I don't know if Pat's still there, but Pat, you know, from a legal or flow of funds standpoint, is that even something, you know, an ordinance could contemplate?
Well, I mean, there's kind of two parts to that. What Kevin was saying was that the FAA requirements do not allow airport revenues to pay, you know, the county debt, or to pay the county for an increased borrowing cost of, of some future project. I think what the commissioner was saying was, well, then, could we have part of the debt issued with a county full faith and credit pledge and part of it without? So, in essence, reducing the amount of the bonds backed by the county. I mean, legally, I think the answer is yes, but now you've got a much higher borrowing cost altogether because you're doing two separate issues kind of at the same time. So, you know, that would add quite a bit to the cost in, in now having two different security structures as opposed to the way that it's currently contemplated being doing.
Can those, can those costs be penciled to paper? Can we see what those numbers look like relative to the potential downgrade or the impact to the county? Why wouldn't we look at that before we agree to $70 million and 30 years of bonding?
I mean, the cost to the airport's gonna be more, but the risk to the county is gonna be less. That's the end of the day, right?
Yep.
I mean, that's something we could put together, right? So, my, my next question goes to the expenses. I'm, I'm interested that there's been a lot of discussion about revenue sources, but we haven't seen a lot of assumptions about how expenses change over the 30-year period. What is the assumed, I mean, how do we increase revenue at these levels without adding staff?
So, that's a good point because the expenses look similar to how you saw we assess the different non-airline revenues on a, a line on a basis. We did a similar approach with the operating expenses. Took into account utilities, salaries, benefits separately, miscellaneous other expenses, and that increase, I believe, was 6% on a compounded annual growth rate for salaries and benefits. We assumed a, it was, I don't recall off the top of my head on utilities, but it was something greater than 3. As I mentioned at the beginning, what we try to do is increase those expenses at a higher rate to make sure that those are being covered. So, that can be supplied as far as the detail on the, the growth assumptions for those.
I mean, having more gates would require an incremental number of additional baggage handlers and electricity.
Those are not airport employees. Those are airline employees. So, yep. But will it increase, you know, do we need additional maintenance people? Because you have additional ramp to plow. Yes, and that's factored into the assumptions.
I wanted to just dig a little bit deeper into the, into the revenue side. As I understand the analysis, there are basically airline, non-airline, and passenger facility charges are the three main sources of revenue. Is that right?
So, revenue streams that come in on an annual basis, those would be the main sources. The uniqueness is that passenger facility charge is limited to spending on a capital project or offsetting the debt. So, the, in the pro forma, what we did is assume some of that PFC is used on a Pago basis upfront, and then it is used to offset debt.
And is this count as a capital project that PFC charges are available to service?
I think most of it. So, well, there's usually some percentage that's not within a terminal project, but yes.
So, and let me clarify that. That would be for, like, a concessionaire build-out. So, a concessionaire, a private entity that's building out a bar or a restaurant, they would be responsible to do that. So, a PFC would not cover that.
Okay. But for the holding room and the apron expansions, PFC is available for that? Is there a way to designate that those funds are for this debt service in an ordinance?
They'd be part of the obligation, yes. It's part of the.
Dedicated to this project as opposed to some other project? So, I'm curious that your parking lot was full in February. And I'm curious, as Commissioner Flynn asked, that parking revenues are projected to provide, to triple from 3 million in 2024 to 9 million in 2034. How do we increase parking revenue, triple parking revenue? And, and to be clear, parking revenue is the biggest portion of non-airline revenue, right?
Correct.
And non-airline revenue is the largest portion of revenue projections on an operating basis, right?
Correct.
So, how do we get airport parking up from 3 to 9 million dollars in the next 10 years? Is that a parking deck?
No, it's surface parking. Yeah, and we're not looking at a, everybody keeps, you know, we're thinking, when you're thinking parking deck, you're thinking, you know, 30 years out, we'd have to have a deck that would be, you know, almost 5,000 spaces. And we're at a parking lot size of about 1,300 right now. So, we would have to have significant growth. So, the parking deck, it's, it's surface parking lots that we have available now to expand and add enough parking for, to meet these projections.
So, we would have to triple, we either have to triple the rates, triple the number of parking spots?
I, I don't think so. You're, you're adding spots. You are increasing rates with cost of living and others to get to those numbers. That's correct.
So, so parking, so let's say the airport in 2030, the, the projection is 7 million in revenue from parking. Let's say there's competition. Let's say there's an old airport a mile down the road with a big sort of parking lot that would like to cash in on some of that. Is there anything that prevents competition for parking?
So, if, if an off-airpark parker were to develop today, they would have to be part of our ground transportation ordinance to bring on those people parking in that particular garage space or whatever it may be. So, they'd have to pay us a percentage of revenue from those parking to offset that. So, in essence, I would love for someone off parking, off airport to do that because then we don't have to take on that capital investment, and we would benefit from that revenue stream.
What is the capital investment?
Well, it depends on the size of the parking lot. The last parking lot we built and added 420 spaces was about 2.2 million.
And is the cost of that parking lot included in revenue, in spending projections going forward?
Yes.
It's part of the plan.
So, it would likely be funded with some of the cash that was sitting there. You can, you heard some of those numbers about the existing reserves. So, there's existing cash reserves that could be used on that. Something like PFCs and grants are not gonna fund a parking lot. The, the, the other part, we're, in our analysis, we were looking on average of just shy of a million dollars a year building into that reserve, lower on the first couple of years, but then, long-term, on average, it was about that. So, presumably, that would also contribute to funding available for the, a capital expense of a parking lot to support that revenue.
So, my last question has to do with the number of people that pass through the airport every year. I'm, it seems to me we've got two different numbers, and as I'm looking at your annual report from last year, it looks like you peaked in 2021. July of 2021 is the best year you ever had, the best month you ever had?
No. July of '24 was the best month we've ever had.
You haven't reported that yet publicly.
Well, that comes in our '24 audit.
So, in 2021, you were at about 111,000, 23 was, I'm sorry, 21 was 112,000, 23, 111. What was it in July of '24?
I want to say it was 122 or 127. I don't have it off the top of my head.
So, so my question has to do with airport capacity and the number, the number of people who walk through the airport in a year, right? The number we've heard in a multiple letters is 700 and.
787,114 was the '24 number.
But that's not all walking in at the same time, right?
Correct.
The Walmart's capacity is based on how many people that fire marshal says can safely be inside that building.
Correct.
Doesn't have anything to do with number of people that walk through Walmart in a year. Doesn't have anything to do with number of people that walk through Walmart in a year, right?
Correct.
So my question is, what is the capacity of the airport right now? Is the air marshal kicking people out in July?
So our, our, our fire count, our fire that's approved by, is 1,125 in the building.
And how often do you meet that?
Through the month of July, we're watching that on an hourly basis.
So you haven't met it yet?
I can't say that we, you know, I'm not going to say that we haven't exceeded it.
Don't want to tell the fire marshal that?
Yeah. But you have to remember that is for the total building. So when you look at the passengers beyond the security checkpoint, you're taking 1,125 people, pushing them on that, that other side. So that capacity is not the whole building. You're, you're, you're impacting the amount of volume you can put through on the holdroom side because it's not the entire building that's 1,125, or it's not the holdroom that's 1,125. It's the entire building.
And it looks like you could almost double your winter capacity and still not be reaching that, right? It looks like you're only at 30 flights per day based on the numbers?
But, you know, we have not reached it in the wintertime. But with the growth that we're seeing, we've had several of our weekend flights, especially when allegiance is operating, that we've pushed pretty close to capacity in the wintertime also. That's more on a, I'll say a daily peak versus a weekly peak like we see in July.
Does the FAA prevent the airport from using Costco rent to pay for road repairs?
Yes, because it's airport revenue, airport revenue can't be. We, we actually explored that. So if you're, for the town line.
I would hope so.
Yeah, we've explored that. We, we've actually.
Can you share that analysis and exploration with us?
And, and the fact of using Costco's rent to go off and do that? It was a question directed to the FAA.
And did they answer it?
Yes, they.
In writing? Can we see it?
Yeah, we, we did get that in writing, correct.
But we, could you share that with us?
Yeah, we can do that.
Are you sure? Okay. So thank you, everyone, for your presentation and the crowd sticking here with us. I have three questions. That's it. I swear to God, I have three questions.
I have, I have.
I have another, too.
Okay. My first question, when we're talking about the primary bond sizing, it indicates that there's actually going to be two series of bonds. Is that correct? One for '26 and one for '27?
That's the advisement of the, our bond council and our financial advisors to do two issues. That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Parking lot, we all like talking about the parking lot. So having been, having to use short-term parking for a week because long-term parking was full in February, I appreciate that. So my question is going to be, is the parking lot going to be the first thing or the last thing?
So I, I'll give you in days' plans. In the next 30 days, what we have planned is to use overflow lots at our fire station. And we've taken 160 spots from our car rental ready facility to be able to accommodate additional parking. So that's the next 30-day plan. We have bids on the street right now for expansion of our car rental ready lot, which is the west side of the building, and our cell phone parking lot. We will be bringing to our, the Airport Authority Buildings and Grounds and the board here in the not-too-distant future, the additional, what we're, we're going to term economy lot that would require shuttle service to be built in that north Costco area. We'd hope to be that, would be online, but we have to go through that process. So parking lot is our primary focus at the moment.
Thank you. And my last question, it had to do with money. And I'm not laying blame, blame to anybody, but you're one of two parties that are here, so I'm going to ask you. So last year, there was a misunderstanding, to put it, where there was talks about the airshow being pushed further up the bay or being changed in the time, the suspended. So as we move forward, the bonding project, I'm personally looking for a guarantee that that's not going to happen.
We have an agreement with Cherry Festival, which both parties into, and it defines the parameters of the airshow, the impact. And what it does is it creates balance for everybody. That was our goal all along. If, if there's someone that would like to say that the airport doesn't want to see the Blue Angels or the Thunderbirds, they don't know us very well. We're aviation enthusiasts and they've missed the mark. So we have an agreement. It creates a balance, it creates a structure so that the airlines don't lose revenue that doesn't negatively impact customers. And so we're very proud of that agreement and I'm glad we got there.
Thank you for sharing that. I appreciate that. So I'm, I'm going to just go right from the end and come back around. Commissioner Hansel.
All right, a couple of things. I want to thank Commissioner Andrews for her questions because they, they made me think of some things. But a couple of things during her questioning, I wanted to kind of put in perspective. The first one was if the airport, if, if the county backs the bonds and the airport can't make the payment, the county would be on, on the hook for a $5 million payment. But I, I think it's more realistic to say the gap of the payment. If you're a hundred grand short that year, it's only 100, it's not the full 5 mil. It's whatever the gap happens to be if there's a shortfall in revenue, right?
Correct.
Okay, and is, and do the documents reflect that versus?
Correct.
If you, if you don't have enough, we have to make the whole payment?
No, it's the covenants that reflect that, correct.
Okay. And the other thing is when we talk about the bond rating, the five to 10 basis points, if the county was to go from a triple or a double A plus to a, a double A. When we look at those, and this is probably a question more for the, the bond council, when we look at those scenarios, are we taking into account the increase in assets that comes from the airport building this project? Because we, you know, if you build a $200 million project, now you have $200 million worth of assets. Is that being taken into account in these scenarios?
So the S&amp;P model does not account for that in particular. The, the formulaic model that S&amp;P uses for debt focuses more on the current cost of debt versus the county's revenues and your total debt per capita, you know, within the, within the county.
Good, thank you.
Sorry, if I may chime in, you know, and, and that's exactly right. When, when S&amp;P looks at this, they do, do a scorecard and they do do metrics and there is a computed output that comes with this. But, you know, having, we also advise Grand Rapids Airport on their debt, and this is the same structure that they use. And, you know, it, it changes over time and it changes with the discussion. So yes, upfront, there may be, you know, an, an output and concerns from S&amp;P. But as this goes along and as revenues do come online and coverage is established and that comes on, you know, more credit may be given, more of an understanding of how the operations and the dynamic between the county and the airport work out. And so that's, you know, there is, there is kind of below-the-line adjustments that are made based on, you know, non-qualitative factors that do go into that rating, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Nelson?
All right. First, I want to address the appearance of maybe a conflict of interest. I want people to understand that Bob Nelson is not my older brother. I was probably assuming that. He spells the name differently, so. So we have a phased-in approach in this project. So there's protections along the way. Some of the, the funding questions that have come up, I think are good ones. It's something we need to, to look at. I think it's important, it hasn't been mentioned so far, is that Senator Peters and Congressman Bergman have expressed their support for this project. And we know that the current president loves his airports, flown out of here a couple of times. So I think, I think we have some good federal support behind this. That's something that I know that the, from sitting on the Airport Authority, you guys have worked with quite a bit. You have a very strong connection with that. So, and they've, they've been very supportive all along. Thinking about in case of a partial or catastrophic failure and/or the, and the sustainability of the airport, I think as a member of the Board of Commission, I want this project to be as approachable and, and attainable for the airport because that benefits us from a standpoint of that, that project doesn't come back in our lap in any way. So the, the, the better the ratios are for the airport, the better it is for us. And then if there's a partial or even catastrophic failure where we end up having to face some of that debt, it behooves us to have that debt be in a better position than a higher rating. So it, it, it serves us that they're more apt to be able to, to, to achieve the goals and make the debt payments. But if it comes to us, we're still in a better position because now part of that is our debt and our responsibility until they can pay us back. And in, in the case of some other event that occurs outside of what we can predict. And the last thing, the $18 million, the $17.9 million that is the savings, that $18 million, if, if there's a higher interest rating, that leaves this community. If that $18 million is, is spent at the airport, it stays in this community. And I always talk about the velocity money is from six to 15 times, which means that $18 million turns into $108 million of spending within Grand Travers County. So I don't want to, that $18 million is not insignificant. That, that's important for our community. So I obviously, I support, supporting this, this bond with, with the county's backing. And I hope that that's how my fellow board members feel.
Thank you. Commissioner Spence?
I forgot to say thank you to all of you for your presentation earlier.
That was good.
It was good. It was thorough. Patrick, you brought up a lot of my concerns about the cost of borrowing, and so thanks for that. This is a big expansion, as you all know, and it's going to have a big impact on the neighborhood around the airport with the additional traffic and a lot of people coming and going. Is it a good time, is it fair to ask about impact fees or what you're going to do to cushion or make it better for people who live in the area? And for example, several years ago, when I served on the Garfield Township Parks and Recreation Commission, there was some tree clearing in what's now either mine or Lauren's part of Garfield Township. I think it borders it. The tree clearing was done, the FAA promised to come in and plant trees and do some landscaping, some shorter trees and shrubs. And to my understanding, it's never been done. So this might not be the time to ask because we're talking about money and we're talking about financing. But I just would like to know, have some assurances that when there's improvements to Town Line Road, it's in writing, it's documented. We feel assured that those types of adjustments are going to be made because this growth and this expansion is going to have a lot of impact on the area. And there are residential neighborhoods around there.
Absolutely, and I greatly appreciate that. And going back to that, that project, those projects were handled with easement dollars and those homeowners were paid for those tree removals and impacts, as you state. And so they were compensated for that. Part of that compensation was them committing to replanning trees and installing and bringing that back. So the issue then now falls to that homeowner in planting those and following up. So they've been compensated or those fees have been paid.
Well, this was a stretch of land that was, that's not developed. It's kind of their backyard. It's, it's a park, actually. It's.
In that park? The owners of the park were compensated for that. Yep. So those fees were paid.
But then getting, just to wrap up, because we've got a lot to cover.
Yeah, absolutely. And we can talk more afterwards, but I wanted just you to go away with the feeling, knowing those fees were paid.
Yeah, just the impact on Town Line Road. I'll use that as an example, like that, that has to be fixed. And we've talked about, we're working on it, maybe. But I'd like to just see it in writing and a promise that that kind of infrastructure is going to be built to make up for the impact that this airport expansion is going to have.
We signed on with the, both Townships, Garfield and East Bay Township and the Road Commission to be a partner of that. So we have put it in there. Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just that, you set a high standard for when my kids come and ask me to co-sign for their.
I, can I be part of that presentation when they do that? Thank you.
So I want to thank you for being a part of the community and, and your continued success. Thank you.
Please.
Was Lelandlaw approached to help with bonding as well?
Due to, we researched that. Due to the Revenue Bond Act, because the asset of the airport falls within Grand Travers County, by law, they cannot participate. Where they would end up participating, though, is if the airport were to fail altogether, there is a formula in the Articles of incorporation that would make them 15% responsible for that. 85% would fall to Grand Travers County.
And have they already voted on that piece of it?
They did. And at the meeting that we had jointly, I did inquire if they'd be interested in engaging in an inter-county agreement to help fund the costs associated, and they politely declined.
Oh, I'm so surprised.
That's why there's a good agreement in place. One of the things, though, if I may just comment, you know, I thank the board for their hard work and due diligence on looking at, and we've heard a lot of what I call doom and gloom questions on what if and the risk and everything else. And those are most appropriate questions. But I do want to state this is the airport is debt-free. We are debt-free and right now, this will be our first debt taken on as the Airport Authority. And so we are debt-free. We have paid our bills. We have a 50-year history with the county of paying all of our bills on either, on prior debt that we've had. We are very solid in our financial situation with employment, employees, pension, et cetera. We're very solid in all of those funds. So we, I want to make sure that, yes, when we talk about doom and gloom all the time because we've got to talk about risk, that's the conversation and we greatly appreciate it. But our strength is there. Our passengers are growing. We're the number three airport in the state of Michigan. If we would have had this conversation 20 years ago, we would have been seventh or eighth in the state of Michigan. We're growing because Grand Travers County is growing. So when you look at the, you know, the overall impact on your bonds and your bond rating, please also consider the number of individuals or homeowners that we bring in to your community, to your county, that also began to pay taxes and contribute to that. Without the airport, they would not be here. So all those factors that you need to take a look at, we greatly appreciate it. We greatly appreciate the understanding. But know that we are a committed partner. Know 100% we do not want to come back to you. That is not our goal. Our goal is to create the best project. And so when you talk about that, as Commissioner Nelson said, is we have many partners in this project. We have federal partners, we have local partners, and we'll have even private enterprise partners in this. And so it takes us all. It takes that village to build an asset that has been an impact to all of us. And just know that our commitment is to honor everything that you stand for, that you have here, to honor that, to make sure, as, as Commissioner Flynn says, that we don't have to be that parent to come back and, and, and ask for that, you know, co-sign dollars. We don't want to be there. And that's where the reputation of the firms that we've hired, that does the analysis, that we know that if we, once we hire them, they're not going to let us go forward because their reputation is intact on if we cannot financially. They will impact in a airport industry-wide representation if we were to be, as Commissioner McAllister asked, the one airport that didn't make it. We don't want to be there, we're not going to be there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone but TJ? Just kidding. Thank you so much for being here. Apologize to everybody who's been waiting, but we're going to take a 10-minute break.
force. I'm going to let Chris tee it up and introduce her. Yeah. Good morning, everybody. Just for the record, I'm Chris Forsyth. I'm the deputy county administrator. So as Nate indicated, we do have a couple of task force members here. We do have the former chair, Dr. David McGrahm, with the Grand Travers Drug Free Coalition, as well as Paul Lipinski, CEO of Addiction Treatment Services, Sharice Shively, who leads Community Corrections. And the sheriff was here as well. He was a member, but unfortunately, he had to leave. So I just want to recognize them and thank them for their work, and I did talk to Dr. McGrahm yesterday. If there is the opportunity, if it's okay with the commissioners and the chair, you know, he can also answer questions or provide input as well. So with that, what you have in the packet beyond just the slide deck, you have the strategic plan that was developed by the task force with Sarah Bannon's help. You have an executive summary of the plan, a shorter, three, four-page version of the plan. You have Excel spreadsheet, which is budget detail, which was used to develop the cost projections to fund the priorities. Then you have this presentation, and then finally, Sarah's done a good job of summarizing the deliverables, which I feel helps explain how did we go from A to B and how was this plan developed? And I'm going to just go through some background information, as well as the status of the funding, and then I'll turn it over to Sarah, who can take over the remainder of the slides and ask questions you may have about the strategic plan. So again, we're going to, just an overview of the settlement amounts. Sarah will then talk about the task force, its work, and answer any questions about the needs assessment and strategic plan document. So I just want us to go back in time almost two years ago. So this was taken right out of my presentation at the May tenth study session, and if you look at this chart, there's a lot of unknowns in the funding, a lot of question marks. And at that time, we were projected to receive approximately four point five million in settlement funds. As of today, a lot of the unknowns are now knowns, a lot of the blanks have been filled, and today, four point five has grown to just over five point eight, with one point six received. And in fact, what I want to tell the Board of Commissioners is that yesterday afternoon, I received email notification that Walgreens will be making its 2025 payment that we'll receive beginning of April. That amount is twenty-five thousand, fifty-eight dollars and eleven cents. So even that one-six-four-seven number needs to be increased. Just further comment for you on where do these numbers come from? And there are really three data points used to develop these numbers. One, I've hyperlinked below the opioid settlement payment estimator. If you had the opportunity to click on that link, up should pop up a spreadsheet that the Attorney General's Office has developed that shows you statewide what the state, as well as every local unit participating, will receive, broken down by each settling defendant over the course of a fifteen to eighteen-year period in time. The second data point is from the Michigan Association of Counties. They have an opioid settlement resource, which is a great dashboard, that you can pull up a dropdown, and that will show you what each county will be receiving. And then finally, the third data point is from Brown and Greer. Brown and Greer has been appointed by the federal court as the directing administrator. So all the funds are held by Brown and Greer. They're released, there's a webpage where you have credentials to log in, so I have credentials to log in, and they have their own projections, as well as projected dispersment timeframe. So again, these numbers you see on that slide came from those three data sources. Now, why didn't I include the state of Michigan settlement amounts? Because this amount is not all the settlement, the settling defendants the state has settled with. So if you count every settling defendant, state of Michigan settled with, it's about one point six billion that the state of Michigan has gotten. So like Grand Travers County and other counties and local units, the state also went through a process of developing a strategy and spending plan, and they've established a dedicated fund. And those funds, they're, would you say, trickling out, Sarah, or slowly flowing out through Health and Human Services, as well as the PIHPs? And the PIHP for this region is NIMRE, North Michigan Regional Entity. So if you go to Health and Human Services website, you'll see notices of grant opportunities for use of settlement funds. NMRE, they, again, they're maybe a little behind the state. They recently issued a request for information on projects, but more to come, and more will be available over the next seventeen or so years. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sarah. If there are any questions about the funding, the source of funding, some of the background, I'm glad to answer them right now.
Any questions at this time? That's awesome.
All right. Go ahead, Sarah.
Good morning. I learned so much about airports I had no idea. That was pretty, that was intense. Don't quiz me. Good morning. Nice to see everyone. And it's also awesome to see some of the task force here, too, because they hung with the whole process because they also have both during their participation and continued attendance in the opioid epidemic task force. They also are obviously here today, so that's wonderful. Okay, so if we take a little bit of a snapshot back in time, June twenty-first, 2023, you folks or the county commissioners at the time was a little bit different constituency, but some of you and some others authorized the inception of the opioid epidemic task force, and the purpose is stated on there. The decision was made to certainly make sure that it was a diverse, and it was, in fact, a very diverse nine-member committee as the core members. And I guess I do want to add one thing that's not on there, and that is that we added an additional person with lived experience that participated regularly along the way as well, and that was very much valued. And then as we went through our surveying and we developed documents, we also made sure to reconnect back to the community, to other stakeholders and experts, as well as persons with lived experience. So I want to make sure that there's an understanding that, yes, there were nine core members, but beyond that, there were many others in the community that contributed their voice and their thoughts. So we started meeting in July of 2023, and we had eleven total sessions. The individuals, for those of you, and again, you've seen all these documents, so you probably know probably actually everybody in this group quite well because they're longstanding experts in the community in their own rights. But Dr. McGrahm was the chief facilitator and chair of the process, and he is here today, as was stated. Judge Cooney, who's, while he's busy doing the judge stuff right now, he could not be here today, but I'm sure he would have if he could have been. And then, as you can see, we had representatives both from the court, as well as the CMH, and actually, thank you, Commissioner Flynn was there regularly and contributed her thoughts and questions. And then, as we mentioned, Mike Shea was here and had to leave, unfortunately. We did also have regular and active participation from the Grand Travers Tribe, which was wonderful. I think that was quite a sign, as I've worked with and talked with others in the state, there has not always been that kind of connection. So just
The opioid epidemic task force, Mr. Alger?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. With us today is our consultant, Sarah Bannon, and several members from the opioid task force. I'm going to let Chris tee it up and introduce her.
Yeah. Good morning, everybody. Just for the record, I'm Chris Forsyth. I'm the deputy county administrator. So as Nate indicated, we do have a couple of task force members here. We do have the former chair, Dr. David Mc Graham, with the Grand Travers Drug Free Coalition, as well as Paula Lipinski, CEO of Addiction Treatment Services, Sharice Shively, who leads Community Corrections. And the sheriff was here as well. He was a member, but unfortunately, he had to leave. So I just want to recognize them and thank them for their work. And I did talk to Dr. Mc Graham yesterday. If there is the opportunity, if it's okay with the commissioners and the chair, you know, he can also answer questions or provide input as well. So with that, what you have in the packet beyond just the slide deck, you have the strategic plan that was developed by the task force with Sarah Bannon's help. You have an executive summary of the plan, a shorter three, four-page version of the plan. You have Excel spreadsheet, which is budget detail, which was used to develop the cost projections to fund the priorities. Then you have this presentation. And then finally, Sarah's done a good job of summarizing the deliverables, which I feel helps explain how did we go from A to B and how was this plan developed? And I'm going to just go through some background information, as well as the status of the funding, and then I'll turn it over to Sarah, who can take over the remainder of the slides and ask questions you may have about the strategic plan. So again, we're going to, just an overview of the settlement amounts. Sarah will then talk about the task force, its work, and answer any questions about the needs assessment and strategic plan document. So I just want us to go back in time almost two years ago. So this was taken right out of my presentation at the May 10 study session. And if you look at this chart, there's a lot of unknowns in the funding, a lot of question marks. And at that time, we were projected to receive approximately 4.5 million in settlement funds. As of today, a lot of the unknowns are now knowns. A lot of the blanks have been filled. And today, 4.5 has grown to just over 5.8, with 1.6 received. And in fact, what I want to tell the Board of Commissioners is that yesterday afternoon, I received email notification that Walgreens will be making its 2025 payment that we'll receive beginning of April. That amount is $25,058.11. So even that 1,647 number needs to be increased. Just further comment for you on where do these numbers come from? And there are really three data points used to develop these numbers. One, I've hyperlinked below the opioid settlement payment estimator. If you had the opportunity, click on that link. Up should pop up a spreadsheet that the Attorney General's Office has developed that shows you statewide what the state, as well as every local unit participating, will receive, broken down by each settling defendant, over the course of a 15- to 18-year period in time. The second data point is from the Michigan Association of Counties. They have an opioid settlement resource, which is a great dashboard, that you can pull up a dropdown, and that will show you what each county will be receiving. And then finally, the third data point is from Brown and Greer. Brown and Greer has been appointed by the federal court as the directing administrator. So all the funds are held by Brown and Greer. They're released. There's a webpage where you have credentials to log in. So I have credentials to log in, and they have their own projections, as well as projected dispersment timeframe. So again, these numbers you see on that slide came from those three data sources. Now, why didn't I include the state of Michigan settlement amounts? Because this amount is not all the settling defendants the state has settled with. So if you count every settling defendant, state of Michigan settled with, it's about 1.6 billion that the state of Michigan has gotten. So like Grand Travers County and other counties and local units, the state also went through a process of developing a strategy and spending plan, and they've established a dedicated fund. And those funds, they're, would you say, trickling out, Sarah, or slowly flowing out through Health and Human Services, as well as the PIHPs? And the PIHP for this region is NMRE, North Michigan Regional Entity. So if you go to Health and Human Services website, you'll see notices of grant opportunities for use of settlement funds. NMRE, again, they may be a little behind the state. They recently issued a request for information on projects, but more to come, and more will be available over the next 17 or so years. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sarah. If there are any questions about the funding, the source of funding, some of the background, I'm glad to answer them right now.
Any questions at this time? That's awesome.
All right. Go ahead, Sarah.
Good morning. I learned so much about airports I had no idea. That was pretty, that was intense. Don't quiz me. Good morning. Nice to see everyone. And it's also awesome to see some of the task force here, too, because they hung with the whole process, because they also have both during their participation and continued attendance in the opioid epidemic task force. They also are obviously here today, so that's wonderful. Okay, so if we take a little bit of a snapshot back in time, June 21, 2023, you folks or the county commissioners at the time, it was a little bit different constituency, but some of you and some others authorized the inception of the opioid epidemic task force. And the purpose is stated on there. The decision was made to certainly make sure that it was a diverse, and it was, in fact, a very diverse nine-member committee, as the core members. And I guess I do want to add one thing that's not on there, and that is that we added an additional person with lived experience that participated regularly along the way as well, and that was very much valued. And then as we went through our surveying and we developed documents, we also made sure to reconnect back to the community, to other stakeholders and experts, as well as persons with lived experience. So I want to make sure that there's an understanding that, yes, there were nine core members, but beyond that, there were many others in the community that contributed their voice and their thoughts. So we started meeting in July of 2023, and we had 11 total sessions. The individuals, for those of you, and again, you've seen all these documents, so you probably know probably actually everybody in this group quite well, because they're longstanding experts in the community in their own rights. But Dr. Mc Graham was the chief facilitator and chair of the process, and he is here today, as was stated. Judge Cooney, who's busy doing the judge stuff right now, he could not be here today, but I'm sure he would have if he could have been. And then, as you can see, we had representatives both from the court, as well as the CMH. And actually, thank you, Commissioner Flynn was there regularly and contributed her thoughts and questions. And then, as we mentioned, Mike Shea was here and had to leave, unfortunately. We did also have regular and active participation from the Grand Travers Tribe, which was wonderful. I think that was quite a sign, as I've worked with and talked with others in the state, there has not always been that kind of connection. So just the fact that there was that ongoing contribution and participation, I think, is noteworthy. This is the meeting schedule. It was all public record. You have minutes, as well as the agendas themselves, to go back and refer to. This is really just a high-level summary of key accomplishments. The reason that I went back and gave you the two-page Word document was to kind of show the building, if you will, of kind of, as Chris said, how we got there from here. A lot of things were covered. A lot of experts came in from the community and gave their thoughts and recommendations, and why certain things that are either in place in the community, or perhaps in place that needed to grow or be considered for growth, you know, should be a part of perhaps the funding through the opioid epidemic task force, or excuse me, lawsuit dollars. But in a nutshell, as I said, we had a lot of stakeholder feedback all the way through the process. We had, because it was an open meeting, we always, at the beginning and the end of the meetings, made sure that we had time for open comment, public comment. Also, we looked heavily at best practices across the state of Michigan and nationally. We certainly looked at community data and trends in both opioid use disorder, as well as substance use disorder. I want to stress that one of the things, and it's unfortunate that it had to happen the way it did, but just within the last few years, because of this epidemic, the state of Michigan, as well as other parts of the substance abuse funding community, have gotten a lot better at providing information about not just SUD, but OUD specifically. And that did not exist until just really within these last few years. So that helped us a great deal. That did not really even exist, or if you could find it, it was very dated, or it was cobbled in pieces and parts. We went through a priority-setting process with the membership, all sort of equal votes, one person, one vote kind of thing. We also made sure that we developed, as you see, a pretty extensive needs assessment and strategic plan. And again, when I say needs assessment, I kind of caveat that. It was very focused to just addictions, with obviously laser focus on OUD. And then last but not least, just wanted to highlight that again. We had a lot of presentations from a variety of individuals, not just in the task force, but from the community that came in and provided their thoughts. Okay, so some of the final recommendations in there, more, but these are some of the ones that sort of came to mind as I was reflecting on the whole process. The task force believes strongly that since we know that these dollars are not going to be expended just within the next year or two, that we're going to have about a tail of 17 years in terms of total funding. So we get to revisit this. It's going to be like Groundhog Day. We're going to be seeing it again and again. That we really need to have a standardized methodology that's used in a standardized process, so that as this goes forward, that, you know, we're not sort of hopefully feeling like we have to reinvent this every single time, and that for consistency and integrity, we're looking at what works, as well as taking good looks at, you know, what is, in fact, maybe emerging needs, either things that we are better addressing, as well as things that did not exist or exist at the same level of severity that we need to consider or reconsider. A standing statement all the way through the document, as you look at the kind of wrap-up, is that the task force believes strongly that we have to maximize other funding. I mean, even though, you know, so it's 6 million bucks kind of thing, that, as you know, when you're talking about an epidemic and something that is touching so profoundly this county, we're not going to be able to fix everything with that kind of money. We can't. So we need to look at certainly availing ourselves to the dollars as they come out from the state of Michigan. And they are coming out in sort of a patchwork. There is not a, like, spending plan, or sometimes what you see at the federal level, where they say, all right, here's all the projected ways that, you know, we're going to spend money within this next fiscal year. We don't have that. So we're just going to have to keep looking at the state of Michigan's website, and just stay current as best we can, and try to, again, apply for dollars when it's appropriate. So connecting with community stakeholders, this is something I know Dr. Mc Graham and I were just touching on. I'm sure he will add some thoughts. But making sure that, say, at least once a year, or even, you know, every two years, no less than that, that there are, in fact, opportunities for a group of experts to get back together, you know, even if it's just for a really good day, so to speak, to say, all right, where are we in terms of the spending? Where are we in terms of issues, et cetera? And then hand-in-hand with that would be, of course, refreshing the data. That's going to be so important, again, so I mean, how can we know if we're moving the needle in terms of impact unless we're able to really do a good job looking at that? I do want to take just a, it's not on here, but I want to stress this for those of you that don't know, because this just has happened within the last week. The state of Michigan is going to be doing a procurement for the prepaid inpatient health plan, or PIHP system. And so step one has already begun. For those of you that are interested, I can't provide it to you right this second, but I could give you the link, because anyone in the public, whether you are a primary user, or excuse me, consumer, secondary consumer, you are a, you know, community member, you're a provider of services, it doesn't matter, the state wants to hear from you via a survey. So that's step one, and then they will be doing some town halls. And then the intention is, within the next many months here, there will be an issued RFP to the existing PIHP system, the 10, including NMRE, which covers this region, as was stated. But there will be opportunity, and it's not clear yet, because that's not been revealed, if there will be opportunity for other entities, for instance, that are regional entities or national entities from other parts of the country, to be a part of this. So there's, and the reason it's so important, and that's why I'm taking a couple of minutes to say that, is a lot of people don't realize that the bulk of the addiction dollars, the biggest purchaser, if you will, of addiction services in the state, is the PIHP system. So as the dollars flow through, those dollars are being held, particularly on the addiction side, directly by the PIHP. It's not being necessarily funneled the same way as it is on the mental health side, or the ADD, or excuse me, intellectual and developmental disability side. So this is going to have an upheaval, and I think there's going to be a lot of, there's going to be some confusion, and this is going to be a strange time ahead. You will still get your dollars that are coming directly because of the lawsuits, but how effectively the relationship will be in another year or so, and who that relationship may be with, in terms of what the PIHP structure would be in this region, is completely up for grabs at this point. So. All right. So with that said, that was a mouthful, right? Did you want to add anything, Commissioner?
Just taking it all in.
Yeah, well, Commissioner Morris especially has a very, very expressive face, and I know she's a part of the CMH for this region, so I, yeah, anyway. Okay, happy to answer any questions and see where folks want to go.
I'm going to start off. I have a question, and I know you said it, and I really apologize for not writing it out. So the $5.6 million is over 17 years of payouts. Is that correct? Chris?
Yeah, that's correct. So no matter which data you look at, so if you pull up the AG's Excel spreadsheet, I think the last year is 2038.
How much do we currently have in possession right now?
So we have the, at this slide, it would be under-received 1.647, which some of those dollars have been paid out to support Sarah's work, as well as the Board of Commissioners authorized, I think, 39,000 to go to district court to support the drug court program.
Yeah, so we're like at 100, 1.2, I think, aren't we? 1.3?
Closer to 1.5.
Okay.
Yeah.
Notice the far-right column, though. I apologize, I probably couldn't hear the first part. But the far-right column is what makes this so odd, or one of the things, I guess, that makes it odd, is that the payout agreement for each of these lawsuits was very unique. Now, the provisions, the Exhibit E in terms of the requirements for spending are the same, but the payout cycle is completely different. So you've got that top group, distributors, as they were called, where that's an 18-year payout. But then, as you can see, as you move down the list, some of them are paying out, you know, in a year, 10 years, et cetera. So the allotment of dollars, and Chris does have a...
Yeah, and to complicate things, the clock started with some of these settlements when the settlements were executed. So when we're looking at the round one settlement with the distributors, clock there started probably 2021, 2022.
Oh. Anybody have any questions right now? Dr. Mc Graham, I know you wanted to be here. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
This is a pretty good plan. It's not perfect.
Introduce yourself.
Dave Mc Graham, from Garfield Township. Again, I just want to say, this is a really good plan. It's not perfect. This plan and these recommendations, a year from now, could be different. We are hoping that you, as a commission, endorse this work and start moving forward with allocating the funds. Chris has done a nice job, I think, with, I would say, a preliminary budget or draft budget. The number one priority from the group was expansion of the quick response team, which many of you are aware of. It's operating very effectively at the city level, but to go county-wide would be a very valuable tool for the citizens of this county. Other things regarding the court, those are the number two priorities. Those have already been approved. And then if you go down the list, there are other things that should have money released sooner rather than later. I think we're looking at also an endorsement of an ongoing process. Again, this is sort of the beginning of our work, not the end of our work. The task force is done. We've got a good template to work from, but we think that we need a group to continue to advise you as commissioners on how to spend future dollars and how to set future priorities with the funds that are going to continue to come in. And I think, I didn't hear you say it, Chris, but I think we might have 300,000 or 400,000 dollars a year coming in, in addition to what we have already, so.
Yeah, the, yes, that's correct. We'll start with Purdue Pharma. You might have read the news. The news is, it's not a matter of if Purdue is going to settle, it's a matter of when. So we anticipate that 5.8 is going to grow. What that looks like, we're still waiting from council. There is no, there is no settlement agreement at this point, but the talks are very encouraging, and it looks like 5.8 will grow, as well as, if you look at the other selling defendants, yes, each year, we're going to get a round of funding. It's kind of a bell-shaped curve to it. The front years are more, and then over time, it peaks, and then towards the end, it decreases. So funds are coming, and it will continue to grow.
Thank you. I have a question for you, Chris, real quick. What's the likelihood, what's the guarantees that we will get the full value?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand.
Isn't this a settlement that goes to the state, and the state is distributed out to the counties?
No. No, it's, the way I've explained it to others is, the state, the state through the Attorney General's Office is at the table and is somewhat driving the negotiations. But we have a team of attorneys, they're there, there's 2,000-plus local units of government involved. Everybody's got a seat at the table, and the dollars do flow directly to us.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Can I make just one last comment?
Please.
As I've talked to other folks working in the treatment arena, I just want to stress that two of the major things that are gaps for people in recovery or getting treatment are access to affordable housing, recovery housing included, and transportation. And those are part of the strategic plan. Transportation is not nearly getting the attention that it probably deserves in this plan, for a variety of reasons, but I want you to keep those in mind. If people don't have a place to live, like a recovery house and a way to get around, it's really hard for them to succeed getting the treatment, getting to the resources they need. So two simple approaches. Those are the two top needs around the 25 counties that I work in, transportation and housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Walter?
I wanted to follow up on your inquiry about the state funding, just because Ms. Bannon shared about the kind of recent, somewhat recent, I guess, communication from the state about what might be coming of the state opioid settlement funds. So it'll be separate and on top of this, but it sounds like it'll be more of a grant process or a matching process? Is that your understanding, yet to be determined what that looks like, but they're looking for us to match?
No, actually.
Okay.
You're so darn tall, I forgot about that. I don't have to stand on my tiptoes, I can adjust that. So the state has, and to be fair, they're not a whole lot different than any other state, too, so there's the good and the bad of it. They're not used to administering something that will have this kind of chaotic kind of dollars flying in from all these different, you know, settlements, et cetera. But they have already begun issuing RFPs. And really, what people have to do, you know, was it a municipality? It doesn't matter what segment of government, or it can be a city, is to keep track of what's going on on the state of Michigan website. They actually have a dedicated page where they will be posting when they have different, you know, procurement or RFP opportunities, so.
So that was, my question was to administration, maybe Chris is more on top of it, because he's been more involved in this, but who from the county is paying attention to that RFP process and following those grants and deadlines? And how do we plug into that and leverage these funds even more?
Yeah, sure. Great, great question. So yes, we have been paying attention, and it's been a collaborative team approach where, so for example, and maybe Paula can speak to it, there was a funding, a grant funding notification from the state to fund a pilot quick response team. I was aware of it, Dr. Mc Graham as well, the sheriff, Paula. So we've all talked, we've all communicated, we've all said, hey, what can we do from administration to help? Look at those dollars, as well as, I mentioned earlier, a request for information, RFI. Again, aware of that, and have talked to others on the task force about what can we do together to maybe look at those dollars? So yes, yeah, we are actively, and in administration, it is me, so.
So what does that mean? You're actively looking at it, like, are there deadlines coming up that we need to discuss, or is that just internal? I mean, I just want to make sure we're leveraging the funds that we're getting as much as we can to support a pilot QRT, or support, you know, recovery housing, or, you know, if they've got 2 million and we've got 2, you know what I mean?
It is, it's intensely periodically just going online and looking at what's publicly available, and signing up for listservs when we can. It's emails back and forth with people like Paula and Dave. It's, that's the approach we're taking. And if there are other ideas on how we could maybe do that differently or effectively, you know, certainly take those ideas, yeah.
Well, are there currently RFPs there that we are responding to?
Yeah, it's the, yeah, go ahead, Paula, you can...
Good morning. Paula Lipinski, CEO for Addiction Treatment Services. I did apply. The RFP regarding the quick response team, the requirement was that it had to be a service provider, a treatment provider, I apologize. So ATS did make that application. I did receive feedback, and we were denied. These grants are very, very competitive. So we're talking about the whole state, and the request I made was for just to start, because it was a nine-month grant, and so it was due in February for the fiscal year, including March until October, and, I'm sorry, seven-month grant. And so it was denied based on the fact that, well, the main reason was that it was outside the scope. They wanted to focus significantly on, the quick response team model is very much an overdose response model, when you look at it in a very black-and-white manner. Our quick response team takes into consideration behavioral health as a whole, as well as housing. And so therefore, that was one of the reasons it was denied. One of the other interesting factors, I don't know if they considered this as a denial, but they, the funding would have been for a position... but they, the funding would have been for a position to help support the QRT expansion. And they indicated that the salary that was listed was far too low for the area that we live in. And the salary that was listed was also what we pay our providers currently because of what we can afford. In addition to that, QRT, RFP, or for, with the state of Michigan, there is also what they call an RFI that NMRE released, and that was applied for, specific to Addiction Treatment Services service provision. And that did allow for a lot more infrastructure support, meaning improvements to buildings, things like that. There has been also a transportation RFP that was released, I believe, in October. I'm not sure, that is not something that my agency went for. I don't know if our transportation provider, 217, went for that. They have been not coming out nearly as quickly as they should. I mean, the money's been there for quite a long period of time. NMRE has, the first one that they released was the RFI that was specific to treatment providers. But again, that RFI was open to treatment providers throughout the state, not just specific to our northern Michigan region. So if you are a contracted provider for NMRE, you had a right to apply for that. Now, they did say they'd give priority to the providers in the region, but they are still taking that into consideration. And I believe that was about a million that was up for application. And the only thing I'd like to add is, what I will say is that I appreciate what Sarah's indicating in regards to the PIHPs and the Medicaid. Medicaid funds a majority of even Addiction Treatment Services services. So we're talking 85% to 90% of our revenue is from Medicaid. In the last six months, we have seen a 12% decrease in Medicaid funding for the people that we provide. It's going to diminish further. So what does that mean? That's going to mean more people without care, or people that are paying for care that can't afford it. I mean, it's going to impact the community. Services providers such as ATS, we've been around for 50 years. So the opioid epidemic is, it's here. I appreciate what is happening with the funding, but this is not a new problem for this community. So I think all of the providers here are very used to getting creative and going for funding across the board. What becomes unfortunate is sometimes we're competing with each other, and it's not always collaborative for the community. So that is something else. It's happening, there's RFI's out there, there's RFPs out there, and people are trying their best to get the money that they can.
Please.
We learned last week that the state is not going to be supporting the medical assisted treatment in the jail, which has resulted in a $200,000 line item out of our general fund for 2025. That appears to me to be a top-line fundable issue right out of Exhibit E, I believe it is, to the opioid settlement dollars. That was obviously not considered by the opioid task force, because I understand that's new. My question for those in the audience, is there any path to resuming funding, outside funding for MATS in the jail? That's obviously immensely critical service that we are providing to an immensely vulnerable population. And to the extent it's in our general fund, it should probably be funded from opioid dollars to free up those dollars for other county services, so.
I think Chris wants to add, absolutely, and should add more, but I do want to create another framework, too, and that is the number of federal grants that are issued through SAMSA, which is the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. And for the last several years, because this whole addiction wave across the country, including, you know, the OUD specifically, has increased so much, just even last year, there were many opportunities to potentially apply, including for MAT, including MAT in the jail. And unfortunately, as things are, at least at the moment, not there, most of what was projected for federal grants, including in this space, are not being issued. So another opportunity that I check all the time, I work with SAMSA, is just, it's just, there's just, those opportunities are at least temporarily not there, which is also wildly unfortunate.
I think Ms. Lynch had her hand up. I don't know if you saw it, if she had something to contribute.
Please.
Thank you. That's unfortunate. I appreciate the insight.
Hi. Thank you for being here today. My name's Pam Lynch. I live in the city of Traverse City. So I really brought my hand up at that point to mention that I work as a, I run Harm Reduction Michigan. So I appreciate you here, looking at the task force's conclusions and moving forward with a fair and equitable and transparent process, which hopefully all organizations can be open for applying to. But I wanted to mention specifically that I work as a consultant with Wayne State, and I know Wayne State has made a considerable effort throughout the state for MOUD to be provided in county jails. And so I would advocate, Chris, that you continue to stay in touch with Wayne State. And when I talk to them this week in my work, I will make sure that that is connected, because I think they may have resources, or they may know of other funding sources to continue MOUD in the county jails. It's critical. We're kind of setting people up for fail to take them off their medication when they get into jail, and then their brains, like, looking for the very first opiates they can get their hands on when they release. It's like taking, a person that quits smoking when they go to jail. A lot of times, people are able to stop smoking nicotine, which people tell me is harder than opiates. I don't know, by the grace of God, I haven't been tobacco addicted. Anyways, but, you know, the minute a person releases and they now have ability to access one of those things, it's often the first thing they run for. And then if it's an opiate, they're at incredibly high risk of overdose, because their tolerance has decreased substantially while they are incarcerated. Or even if they do a weekend of detox at ATS, their tolerance comes down so much that they're at tremendous risk for an opioid overdose and possibly death. So we really want to make sure that people aren't going through that roller coaster ride unnecessarily, and continue to provide MOUD in the county jails. So thank you for listening today.
Thank you. Do you guys have any more to add there towards the tail end? I'm sorry, I'm not using a microphone, Commissioner Walter. You didn't correct me.
Sorry. I was thinking, I was processing the acronyms, and I think for the commission and public benefit, at least we spell out some of them first and continue using them, as we don't, most of us anyway, none of us work in this field, so it'd be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah. So just further comment on the medical assisted treatment in the jail. Yeah, towards the end of last year, then jail administrator, Chris Barshaf, did let me know that the funding has stopped, and that is something, yes, under Exhibit E is clearly eligible use of the funds. And then my last comment is, so the strategic plan, the cost projections and the budget are very conservative. It was a snapshot in time based on the funds we had received then, and since, the pot has grown. And so the point I'm trying to make is there are potential opportunities to look beyond just what was encapsulated by the task force and look at other eligible activities, because what I'm saying is the dollars are there and will continue to be there for the foreseeable future.
Any more comments or questions for these fine folks?
I just want to say I really appreciate working with these wonderful people on the opioid task force. There's tons of knowledge, great discussions, and I really respect every single one of them in our community, and I thank them for what they do.
Thank you. I concur. I appreciate you guys coming here today and waiting for it to put out your presentation. I know it's a long wait. And those seats are super comfortable, I know. And some good information to take back to our policy procedural task force, our community that we got going on.
Yeah, that's, thank you. That's what I was going to share, is that for anybody following along, we did have our first meeting to discuss the process, and we're looking forward to this meeting to get a little more update on the settlements and where we are. And unfortunately, unfortunate news to hear, there's even more needs than there were before, but that's where we are with lack of federal funding and then from the state as well. So we are meeting again in April. I don't think we have a date.
No.
A date TBD to reconvene and bring back some of the information from this, as well as the information from Michigan Association of Counties has some great resources that we're going to be discussing. So we'll share out that data as soon as we have it to discuss the next process meeting. And then, and I know staff is working on, oh, there's Chris back there, on a process for the process, an application process for the, for us to consider. So that'll be something we'll be taking a look at in April.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then, so that's where we are with that, is that we'll hope to have a clear process for both the opioid settlement dollars as well as the cannabis funds, kind of separate but somewhat connected. That's where we are with that.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Morris, you looked like you wanted to say something.
Who, me?
Yeah.
No, well, maybe I should point out that I don't play poker. With my expression face.
A Renaissance woman, there's one thing you can't do.
The one thing she can't do. All right, well, again, thank you, everyone, for your presentation. Before we move into public comment, Bonnie, I'd like you to have the record reflect that Commissioner Hansel and Commissioner Nelson left at break.
I did. Put that in there.
Beautiful. Thank you. So we'll move to second public comment, to remind her that if you talked about it in the first public comment, talk about something else. Just by all means, as before, please just come to the podium and line up, just for the sake of brevity. By all means, please go ahead and introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Claire Surback, and I'm a resident of Traverse City. I have a master's degree in mental health counseling. For over 30 years, I worked with children who experienced trauma, wasn't very knowledgeable about substance abuse, and until 2004, my family and I were in a horrible car accident, and my son, who was 15 at the time, suffered a shattered pelvis, multiple injuries, and became addicted to OxyContin. So that opened my eyes to a whole nother world, the lack of services. And I will say, thankfully, by many small miracles, he's doing really well with almost 10 years clean now. But when I sit here and listen, you know, with all due respect, it just kind of blows my mind that it seems to be taking so long to take action, right? So in 2016, I decided to try to help other people's kids and loved ones. I started working in Munson's acute care psychiatric, and I was blown away by the number of people in acute care psychiatric who have addiction issues and were not getting the help that they needed. And when they would leave our unit, you know, probably the average length of stays, maybe five, six days, depending, and I would watch them walk out the door, and I think they're either going to complete suicide, they're going to die of a drug overdose, or they're going to end up in jail. The very small percentage were going to make it. And those that have a chance, like my son, and thankfully, many others, but is, they had a good support system, and that the one thing I think that can be done right now, including at Munson, Safe Harbor, is have a case manager, have a social worker helping them reconnect with a family member, or some kind of a support system for long-term sustainable recovery. Help them work on reconciliation, whatever it is that need, they need in that regard. And help family members, because this is hard. It was 10 years of living hell. I wouldn't wish it on anyone. So that is a key thing. The other thing is to understand, and this took me a long time, because I would literally get angry with my son, like, you're not trying hard enough, because I didn't grasp the physical addiction. You know, so we need to have better detox programs, and immediately, right now, through the jail, through Safe Harbor, through Munson. I mean, so many times when I was trying to help a patient be discharged at Munson, we knew they needed rehab, 30 days, 90 days, you know. Oh, I'm sorry, am I over?
Please wrap it up.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Okay, so right now, we, I mean, to have two years and 11 meetings, it's crazy. I mean, right now, Project Harb, Project Unity could have funding and house 10 more guys. I mean, right now. So I just feel like we can take action a lot more quickly. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dr. Mederschmidt, and I just have a simple request. Don't start that. So I just have a simple request that you're looking primarily on the treatment end of everything, but some of the patients that I had come through were teenagers, and they're dealing, just starting to dabble in the drugs, trying them out, and there, there's a huge association between mental illness and the drug use and human trafficking and multi-drug use. And so if you can have, at that end, somebody come in at that point and make an intervention, we're going to have a lot less people going into prison and a lot more success. The other one would be, is that I watched my partner truck up to the hospital several times in a month in order to be able to deal with the patients that were coming in that were pregnant, delivering, and an addict. And the fetus being delivered was already addicted. And so to have a huge intervention program at that point also would be tremendous. I think those two pieces would really help us out a lot. And I say, thank you. And I only, I got two minutes left.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Jerry Morris. I'm with Project Unity for Life, that Claire mentioned. I think you probably all know, I've got a request in to you for $86,000 to convert our garage into three new bedrooms to house people. Wouldn't house 10 people, we don't house that many in it. I finally had to give up on you guys. The NEMRI request, NEMRI got a million dollars, I believe, in November, and they come out for RFPs. I gave my RFP, they said, it was approved, it's going forward to Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and we probably will get the $86,000. And I've waited for at least seven months for you all to come to. You've done this for a year now, two years. So I have to give Chris some appreciation, because I'm assuming now that that $1.6 million, even at a minimal investment, would pay for our conversion of our garage with the interest. I didn't see that up there, but I'm, I do want to take a minute. I am absolutely appalled. I was at your meeting, I think in November, where you approved $17,500 for this presentation? Is that accurate? Maybe you should go back and look, because I think you approved addition, Chris, was it $17,500? You should know.
That was the amendment.
Yeah.
Sorry.
For this presentation. So I'm, I appreciate the $17,500 presentation that I've waited all morning to see. Anyway, I thank you for the work you do, but if you can't, how many more meetings you're going to have to have to come up with an RFP that you already have as Commissioners? Don't you have an RFP request form or a process? Not for this, but don't you have, I mean, I listened to the airport requesting money from you this morning, or support. Don't you have an RFP process? How do people get money from you? I mean, just send a note to your local Commissioner and hope that they bring it up at a meeting? So, anyway, I hope that's not your process. But if you have to go four or five more months to come up with just a simple process to distribute this money, excuse my language, that would be asinine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for speaking today.
Good afternoon. My name is Nancy Dow. I am the Family Support Coordinator at Addiction Treatment Services. What that role means is I work with families that are affected by substance use disorder, meaning someone that they love. My most important role is, I'm Dana Hendrickson's mom. My daughter Dana lost her battle with addiction on April 8th, 2017, and I'm here to be her voice, along with all the other families that have lost a loved one to substance use disorder. I'm going to pass along a picture of Dana here with all of you, so that you understand. I'm going to pass along a picture of Dana here with all of you, so that you understand that she is not just a number, she was a beautiful life, and she lives on through me and every life that she touched. We have providers here today that are looking to use this money to help more people. I'm begging you to please find a way to expedite that sooner rather than later. My daughter's addiction started simply by going to Munson Medical Center with kidney stones in 2013, when she was 20 years old, and her addiction began after that. The stories of the other families that I know, and probably all of them that I don't know, are about the same. Wisdom teeth being extracted, sports injuries, I could go on and on. So I thank you for all the time that you take. I'm very grateful to the opioid task force for all the time that you've put in this. Now let's provide the money to our providers that need it, so that we can help people. I will continue to be her voice till I no longer have a voice, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for speaking today.
Hello. My name is Pepe Martin. I did drugs for over 30-some years. I came, I came here in 2017. I met Chaplain Tina McCully. So I went to, since we had been, I've been in prison. I had aneurysm, I had a stroke, I have seizures. You know, and it's not through the drugs, it just, things just happen. So I tried to, I turned my life over to God, and I just, I wanted to be in a prison ministry. So I talked to Tina McCully, now I'm in prison ministry. I'm working and helping, helping the women and the men start in prison, start to turn their life around there. You know, so, you know, you can't, you can't turn your life on your own. You need somebody to help them, and that's what I'm trying to do. So she's trying to get me to be a life coach. A life coach just helps, helps a person start to, start their journey. And I really didn't want to do it, but I'm going to do it. You know, I just want, I just want to know that it can happen, but you can't do it on your own. You need somebody to help them. You know, I did, I did it in Chicago at Haymarket, real big place. You know, they, they have counselors, they have everything to teach you. And I had a lot of people that's helping me. So I came here, so I wanted to do it more, I wanted to do some more on my own. You know, so I'm with Tina McCully, I'm at the Freedom House, the Keys to Freedom. So I'm here to do whatever I can to help somebody not to, not to, not to die through this stuff, you know? So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your efforts.
Hi, Pam Lynch, again, Traverse City Executive Director of Harm Reduction Michigan, also a person in long-term recovery. Thank you for sharing that, sir. Gave me the courage to bring that up as well. I just wanted to say Harm Reduction Michigan is doing really well. Our budget has doubled in the last two years. We are not a part of the opioid task force locally. Judge Cooney, who I thought for the most part gets some respect and gets listened to, but when he nominated me to be a person with lived experience on the task force, it was tabled. So anyways, I'm not on the task force, but we, Harm Reduction Michigan participates annually in a national survey on resources for people with addiction. And there was a question on there this year. I found it interesting. They wanted to know how much support you had gotten from your local opioid task force, and how you would rate the support of your local opioid task force in supporting the work that your organization has done. The state health department has recognized Harm Reduction Michigan and its efforts in distributing low threshold naloxone. So many people have seen the newspaper naloxone boxes throughout the county. We also asked the county, we asked the task force to please submit a request, how we could submit a request to the county commission, because we would like to place newspaper boxes at all of the county township halls, and that's what that request was for. We haven't heard back about how we can move forward in pursuing that specific request. But we have, like I said, been recognized by the state health department for our efforts. We have 234 newspaper boxes in over 50 counties throughout the state. We are about to put newspaper boxes out at a community college in Wayne County in multiple locations. And we have had national and international press on our work in reducing the opioid problem in the state of Michigan. We also are a partner with the state police with the same funding cycle that QRT is funded by. We're the cohort that came after, the cohort that paid for the original QRT program here. So we're really proud of the leaps and bounds that our organization has made, but we're really excited that the commission is looking forward to a new inclusive way to have many organizations and experts in this community participate in this process. So thank you for visiting us here today.
Thank you for your words.
Thanks again for letting me speak earlier. I think this has been a really good meeting. Dave McGraham, physician from Garfield Township. I, I want to just re-express some of the sentiment that you've heard, and I was wanting to talk about it even before other people spoke. I'd like to see a go-live date. I know there needs to be more discussions, but I think you, as a board, maybe need to set a target date or a deadline for yourselves to start releasing these funds, because my concern is, as with others, it's going to get talked about, it's going to get talked about some more. Other important issues are going to come up, and another six months are going to go by. So I would ask you to consider that you set a target date for yourselves to get moving with dispersing the funds and having a process in place for doing that. And I hope it's 60 days out. I don't think 30 is realistic, but maybe it's 120, but give us something, so that we can go back to our stakeholders and say, look, it's still a work in progress, but we hope to have this work done by, pick a date. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for second public comment. Mr. Alger, notices? Oh, my apologies.
Hi, I'm Corey Winfield from 217 Recovery. I'm the founder and executive director. There's so much really good recovery in this room that I know of, and I think that a lot of that gets overlooked. Nancy made sure that didn't get overlooked, which I think was really great. But the things that we do as a recovery community organization at 217 Recovery, you know, we help people find their purpose. We love doing that. We love people smiling, we love to do that. We also pick people up in their worst condition. They want to die, and we're getting them to treatment with a trained recovery coach from the state of Michigan. You know, that is huge. You know, it's not just the Uber driver, it's not a cab driver, it's not a mom. I am a person of recovery, have six years. I went to treatment 15 times. At the end of it, my mother said, I am not taking you one more time. I had no other way to get to treatment my last time. You know, I made it there, thank God. I realize, too, when you go to bus stops, a lot of times, different PIHPs will put people on buses, and you have a two-hour layover in Lansing, okay? I picture my sister, who has a problem as well, going to a bus stop, and she's attractive, believe it or not. And whether she's withdrawing or whatever, you know, somebody's like looking at her going, oh, I could give that girl this, and off to the hotel we go. And then my parents just think, oh, well, Kylie didn't make it to treatment, because, well, she didn't have the willpower. And this person is detoxing, withdrawing, you know? Like, it is such a critical thing, and you're just going to put them on a bus? Oh, yeah, get them on a bus, get them there. If someone's like sick because of cancer, are people just putting them on a bus? Ah, just take the bus to the hospital. You'll be good. I don't think so. But that's what we do, and we're a recovery community organization. We have a place in town, and we love to help people, but we need the funding to do that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for speaking. Okay, last call one more time. Thank you, everyone, today for being here, waiting patiently and speaking. Mr. Alger.
Mr. Chairman, we do have two notices. One, one actually made the notices. The March 26 study session will be canceled due to spring break, and the 9th, I believe, is the next meeting, study session that will be canceled due to MAC.
Yep. All right. Thank you. Any comments, questions, concerns? One's going twice.
We have recess tonight up in Elk Rapids.
There you go. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Yeah, oh, yeah, we are. Well, then Lauren better not talk very much.